We're gonna call, I want to call this special session meeting at 5:30 PM on, 5:31 PM on July 7th, meeting called to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call order the closed session meeting on Monday, July 7th, 2025. Already stated the time. Mr. Drummer, roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present. City Attorney Hal Barlow, please read the closed session items for the record and let us know if there will be any report out afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Negotiator City Manager, Assistant City Manager and City Attorney, Employee Organizations, Laverne City Employees Association, Laverne Firefighters Association, Laverne Police Middle Management Association, Laverne Police Officers Association, Laverne Fire Middle Management Association, and all unrepresented employees. And then we have Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Gonzalez versus City of Laverne, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number 24STCD34625. I do not expect any reporting out.
Thank you, Attorney Barlow. Counsel, do you have any comments? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open up public comment. Do you have any public comments? We're gonna go ahead and close public comments. Thank you. At this time, we recess at 5:32 PM. Reconvene at 6:30 PM regular City Council meeting. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna start the meeting here in about two seconds. Danita? It's okay. You wanna, I'll wait till you're done chatting.
Sorry.
Welcome, everybody. We're gonna call this meeting to order tonight on July 7th at 6:32 PM, meeting called to order. I want to remind everyone that per the city's rules of decorum, all speakers, members of the audience, and council members are to conduct themselves with decorum and not to engage in conduct that interrupts the orderly conduct of the City Council meeting. Also, public comment through Zoom may be accepted for the agenda items listed within the consent calendar, of a hearing and discussion calendar sections of the agenda. General public comments will be accepted at the meeting by those physically in attendance at the appropriate time. Well, hello, ladies. Good evening. I didn't even see ya. Welcome. Tonight, we're very pleased to have veteran Elias Castro, E4 Army Specialist, conduct the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Castro, please come forward. Those of you that don't know, I think Elias Castro has been here his whole life. Is that correct, Elias? You've been here your whole life?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
I'm a fourth generation, fourth generation, and my grandkids are six generations of Bearcats.
That's, that's what we like. You have the mic, sir.
Okay. Well, all veterans, please salute, and all responders, all others place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
If you would remain there, sir.
Specialist Castro. Absolutely. He had a great officer. Members, members of, great officer. Awesome. Little
Oh.
I gotta lose 20 more pounds when I make it to the land. But, you know, we'd love to, we'd love to.
Well, I was drafted and I served in, gosh, Fort Polk, Louisiana, Fort Gordon, Georgia, and I was a Communication Support Specialist. And I had special assignment and was assigned at McGill Air Force Base in their comp center. I handled all correspondence from Westmoreland during the Vietnam War, and they came to, to me, to my comp center, and I forwarded them to the Pentagon, the President, and all heads of states throughout the world, even countries that I never heard of. It was a good assignment. Of course, I, I, I had put in for Vietnam three times, and I was told that I would not ever be sent where there was a conflict because of my clearance. I wanted to make the Army my, my career, and I came home because I was contacted. My mom had had a nervous breakdown. So I decided I couldn't stay in. But I was contacted by Cape Kennedy. I was offered a great job there, which I wanted to take. And I was offered the job, and I was ready to take it, but and then I knew I would be in Florida. That's where I would be living.
Right.
And I wasn't willing to leave.
God bless. God bless. Entire family currently, current resident, for how many years now?
All my life.
All your life.
Eighty and a half, eighty, eighty and a half years.
Eighty and a half years. You have lived right here.
Yes.
God bless. Without further ado, Specialist Castro, the City of Laverne, certificate of recognition presented, Elias Castro, this certificate is presented on behalf of the Council, Army Specialist, veteran Elias Castro, to gratitude, education, dedication.
Thank you.
You know, a little story about Elias you can't go yet. Many of you don't know, but back when, when Laverne was a starting uptown, that there was segregation here. And the segregation was the Hispanic population, and they were segregated against the white population. Elias was part of that, his family, but he formed a group. What's the name of the group again? Your, your group that you have? Anyway, they've had their, they had their own grocery store here in Laverne. It was for the Hispanic population.
El Segol Corporation.
El Segol Corporation, which helped the Hispanic population, and then the segregation went away, thank goodness. And, but it's still, El Segol Corporation is still in effect. How many years, was it 100? Is it 100?
It's over.
Over 100 years old. Councilmember Johnson and myself went to their celebration. But they would help families. They would help, they would have grocery stores at the time. They would help the families here when the segregation was in to make sure that the population was taken care of. And then, but they were the backbone, one of the major backbones of our community, and were the reason we're such a wonderful city is because of Elias, all of his family, and El Segol Corporation. They did an amazing job, and we're very proud of that. And you should be very proud of that also, sir. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Elias. Mr. Drummer, roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here, by remote.
Mayor Protem Cassepaguita.
Here, sir.
Mayor Hepburn.
Here.
All present, sir, and with Councilmember Johnson, will be doing all roll call votes tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Whoa. Tonight, we have four presentations. First, the proclamation declaring July as National Parks and Recreation Month. I would like to call it the Parks and Recreation, the new Parks and Recreation, which used to be Community Services. Director Yvonne Duran will provide a quick presentation on the name change to Parks and Recreation. And then, then we are gonna do a little special proclamation.
Hey.
Thank you, Director Duran.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight is just a brief and quick presentation in regards to our new name, Parks and Recreation. Again, we were formerly, are formerly known as Community Services. Parks and Recreation truly identifies what we are. Many of times, people ask us, what is Community Services? We're like, Parks and Rec. They're like, oh, yeah, we know what that is. So today, we officially announce that is our new name. You'll slowly see the changes that we have in terms of signage, one day at a time, but most of the website has been updated. Our social media has been updated, too. So just a quick presentation on National Recreation and Parks Month in July as Parks Make Life Better in the State of California. So group picture here of the Parks and Recreation Department at Fourth of July. And here, a quick video of the mayor and Steve Johnson.
Oh, man.
This just keeps living.
Okay, you see where I went down on that thing? You don't know, but that old, that old playground, that ground is a rock. And I swear, my butt hurt so bad for like, two weeks after that. You saw that little expression? It was like, that was pain, just pain. But I did it for Yvonne.
Yes, and I appreciate that. So that was the Lost Floris Playground, which has now been developed along with restrooms. A little bit more on that in a bit. But our new playground that we're updating is Oak Mesa Playground. If you pass by today, you actually saw it being taken away, broken down. Has been ordered. A lot of our new playgrounds you'll see here are gonna have integrated shade structures. It's very warm in Laverne, and this provides shade for children. I have children myself, and I've always hated going down the slide and burning my legs. So this hopefully prevents some of that. And the restroom at Lost Floris Playground, on July 4th of last week, we officially opened these play, these restrooms adjacent to the South End Playground. So with that, that was paid for by Measure A monies. That's Wendy picking out of one of the restroom doors. So it worked. It was great. They open automatically in the morning. They also close automatically as well, but you will not get stuck. There's a button you can press to walk out of that restroom. But the sinks are outside, the blowers are outside. So that way, if you're on the playground, you don't need to go inside. You can just wash your hands outdoors. So really cool facility, very new and innovative, and we're very excited and proud of it. So thank you, Cody and Public Works for putting that project together. One of the things we unveiled this May on Memorial Day was our new statues. That was all through donations, and that was a male and female veteran, as well as a wounded warrior, soon to be a service dog as well. So hopefully, we can raise enough money to add the service dog to the memorial. That also falls under our Parks and Recreation Department. We do oversee Veterans Hall facility, as well as services, and the VFW does have an office out of that facility. Family Night Swim, so in the summer, this past June, we did have a pirate theme night. We actually had 95 participants attend, so well attended. The next one is our Hawaiian theme, which is Saturday, August 2nd, 4:00 PM, $5 per person. Everyone is welcome. You don't have to be a Laverne resident. And we have a couple of famous kids in those pictures, too, JR. Summer Concerts in the Park. We had Silverados. If you did not get there early, you, it was very difficult to find a seat. That park was completely packed, very well attended. The next concert is Upstream. It's a reggae band. If you don't know them, they actually play at Disneyland all the time. So they do play at various cities and as well as Disneyland. We also have Scattered Dreams, an 80s band, and Classic Rock. The Answer is Back. Make sure you get there early, because that park will get crowded. That's on Sundays at 6:30 PM at Heritage Park. Movie Night in the Park. The first movie night is gonna be Sonic the Hedgehog, and then the second one will be Inside Out. Thank you to the Laverne POA. They actually sponsor both these movie nights for us in the community, so they pay for that. So thank you, guys. Our Luau Dance. Those for special needs, but the new, the new term is Intellectual Developmental Disabilities. We host various dances for them, well attended. Roughly about 200 participants come to the community center. We have a DJ. We partner with the Order of the Alhambres. They provide snacks and treats, and good music, and dance, and crafts, and a lot of picture opportunities. Thank you, Rick. Well attended, always advertising for us. The next one is Friday, August 8th, from 5 to 8:00 PM. Summer Classes. Various summer classes, aquatics, arts, sports, dance, gymnastics, music, and Lego classes. Many of those classes are held at either Lost Floris Park, Veterans Hall, the Aquatic Center, or the Community Center. Again, thank you. Just a brief reintroduction as Parks and Recreation, and I'd love to share this quick reel with us on social media. So please follow us at LaverneParksAndRec on Instagram. Now, we're gonna load this baby up, and you're gonna have to do the volume on the auto, right there. And it's to the Parks and Rec theme, the TV show. And the many things that we do in this department, and there's Ken. And I made that on the third try, by the way. So it wasn't AI, JR. Again, thank you. Super excited to be now the Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you to Council for supporting that, to Ken, to everybody, and going on with the summer and doing what we love to do best, is working with the community, the residents. And just a quick note, we did not have staff here today. We worked very long hours for the Fourth of July, so I gave them the night off. But again, thank you to the community and to everybody here.
Your team did a great job at the fireworks show, and they had lots of kids playing all the games. Yeah, they were like crying when they shut them down because it got so dark, but they had a great time. So, City Laverne proclamation. Whereas through an initiative of the National Recreation and Park Association, every July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month to promote the important role that parks and recreation play. And whereas this year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, honors the contributions of more than 160,000 full-time parks and recreation professionals who maintain our country's close-to-home parks. And whereas the City of Laverne maintains over 100 acres across 21 parks, offering a variety of recreational and leisure activities. And whereas Laverne's Parks and Recreation Department is dedicated to providing excellent customer service, high-quality programming, and safe recreation experiences to improve the quality of life for all the City of Laverne residents. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. Now, be it proclaimed by the City of Laverne that the month of July 2025 be recognized as National Parks and Recreation Month. And we recognize and celebrate the contributions of our parks and recreation services and the dedicated staff who make our community a welcome place for all, dated this 7th day of July 2025. And your team does a great job, an excellent job.
I think I said enough. But again, thank you to the community, to everybody for supporting us. If you ever need anything, we're here to help. Love what I do. I can honestly say my degree is in Parks and Recreation. I've done the tourism and I've done everything, but this is where I want to be, and this is what I like. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Yvonne, and your staff. Next, our Police Department will be introducing three new staff members. Chief Gonzalez, would you please come forward to introduce our new staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and members of the public. Exciting times. We get to add three additional members to the Laverne Police Department family. And there, the three of them are here looking sharp. So please, give me a moment quick to provide you with a brief bio, and then I'll allow them to come forward and give a, they'll come together, all three of them, provide a quick one-minute overview of why they're here. So we're gonna start off with someone who's been here for a bit, who came through our farm system. First, the first person I'll introduce is Officer Charlie Sorbell, who grew up in, grew up in Glendora with his family, including his father Edward and his mother Teresa, his brother Roy, and his sister Brooke. In high school, Charlie began his career in law enforcement and began his journey as a police explorer, which I typically call our farm system. After graduating from the Glendora High School in 2021, Charlie wanted to continue pursuing his education and the dream of becoming a police officer. During Charlie's first semester at the University of Laverne, Charlie applied for a position as a police cadet, where he was hired in June of 2022. While working as a police cadet, this is where we, we started getting him pitching, catching, doing all the positions we need. He gained a wealth of knowledge from different assignments, such as property and evidence, patrol, community services, and records. While Charlie was in the academy, he stopped to graduate from the University of Laverne this past December, where he attained his bachelor's degree in sociology. Officer Sorbell recently graduated from the San Antonio County Sheriff's Academy, Class 239 on June 12th. The next member I want to introduce is Officer Maximo Rojas, who began his law enforcement journey in early 2024, answering the deep calling to serve and protect grounded by his faith in the Lord. Officer, he and Officer Sorball were, Sorbell, excuse me, were classmates in the academy. So that's obviously something really cool that they get to experience throughout their whole career. In the academy, Officer Rojas was selected by his peers as the assisting officer for his recruit, recruit class, which I'll allow him to explain what that is. Officer Rojas brings a diverse background shaped by many years of hard work and entrepreneurial experience, has a strong commitment to helping others in need. Before joining law enforcement, Maximo spent nearly a decade as a full-time realtor since the age of 18. He built a career focused on guiding people through some of life's most meaningful and stressful transitions. Whether as a first-time buyer, supporting family through a move, Maximo always aimed to, as a, to be a detailed, dependable, and a fully dedicated to his clients. However, his greatest achievements came from positively impacting people's lives, and this wouldn't be possible without the support of his father, Max Senior, sister Victoria, and his loving girlfriend, Marine, and her family. And lastly, Officer Tyler Emery, who also graduated from Glendora High School in 2016. Later, he attended Mount SAC, where he realized he had a passion for public service. Officer Emery decided to take a sabbatical from college and start working in a full-time position for a water treatment company. During this time, Officer Emery met his now fiancee, Jillian, who have been together for almost five years. Officer Emery is excited to get married next year and start a family there soon after. He enjoys golfing in his free time, and he's a loyal Dodgers fan. That's probably why I picked him. So one thing I wanted to do is, I know she's not here today, but I want to thank his, his fiancee, Jillian, as she pushed him forward to come over to, with us. So after four years, coming to Laverne Police Department. After work, after working four years as a water treatment job, he decided to pursue his passion for law enforcement. And in June 2024, he attended the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy, where he graduated Class Number 477 in November of 2024. After graduating the academy, he began to serve in the Men Central Jail in the, in the county of Los Angeles. After working five months in the jail, Officer Emery received the opportunity to pursue a career with the Laverne Police Department. So please join me in welcoming all three new officers. Come on forward.
All right. Hello, everybody. Evening, evening. I just want to start by saying I appreciate everybody coming tonight. It really is nice seeing a community so invested in the place they live. And that was really what drew me to Laverne. Essentially, just such a, an amazing community that has a, everybody has each other's backs. And I know it's a nice area and amazing people. I can see that by how you guys showed up tonight. So I know Chief talked about me a little bit, but again, for those who don't know me, I am Tyler Emery. I'm 27 years old and new lateral to the Laverne Police Department. And I can't wait to spend the next 30 years serving you guys and the community of Laverne. I'm very fortunate to be here, very happy, and look forward to hopefully meeting you and being there for you when you guys need me. So again, thank you for, everybody for showing up, and it's nice to see you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Officer Maximo Rojas. First and foremost, thank you to everyone here, to the people that played a role in getting me here, and also the citizens of Laverne. This is an honor that I can't put words to. When I started my, my journey to becoming an officer, it started by just wanting to serve. And, you know, it started with a ride-along, where I just realized that being such a small city, the officers really do make an impact in the lives of the people here. And that is really the most important thing. So I'm just really happy to be here and serve everyone here. Like my partner said, I can't wait to serve you guys for a lifetime and make an impact here. So thank you, everyone, and thank you for showing up, guys.
Hello. My name is Charlie Sorbell. As Chief said, I've been with the city for a little over three years now, and it's truly been a blessing. I can't thank the City of Laverne enough for hiring me, for allowing me to grow and work here, and then hiring me again as an officer. It's, it's a dream come true. I owe a huge thanks to my family, to my dad, my mom, my sister, who are here supporting me, all the staff at the Laverne Police Department that's here supporting us as well. They've been amazing mentors, and, and to the city, to Mayor, all the council members. You've just been such an inspiration and motivation for me, and I know as well for Officer Rojas and Officer Emery. And we just can't say thank you enough. Thank you.
our new officers, please. Just so you know, if the family's here and they don't want to stay, you guys can go right now. I'm gonna give you a three-second exit. One, 1,000, two. Guys, take care. Just let us know where you're going for dinner, because we're going with you.
Yeah.
Oh, don't forget the purse.
Leave the check open.
Yeah, just leave the tab open. We'll be there shortly. Meetings adjourned. Our next presentation, we'd update from our homeless outreach support team, Lieutenant Jay Alvarado and Sergeant Carl Flores. Flores, come forward, please. They're busy. They didn't hear it. There they are. Make no way. The chief forget. Oh.
I'm gonna do a quick introduction.
That's a great idea.
Yes. So today, we have
Yes. So today we have before you Lieutenant Alvarado and Sergeant Flores, who spearhead our host team. Nope, I'm good here. They're going to actually come up here in a moment. But today's purpose is to kind of provide a overview of where we were and where we are. And I really liked for people to focus on some of the statistical data, which is incredible for a part-time team. Our goal is to eventually get to a full-time team, but they're going to provide, I don't want to steal their thunder, but they're going to provide some statistical data that's going to be surprising as far as where we were when we started collecting the data in 2021, where it was in 2023 and where we are today. And I'll let them talk a little bit about it. But it's incredible, the team we formed. Again, thanks to the help of our Public Works Team, our new Parks and Rec Department, who's been instrumental in all of this. So without further ado, I'll bring up Lieutenant
Good evening. All right. Our PowerPoint isn't as exciting as Mr. Ann's, but we don't have some videos like that. But that was impressive. But she is a huge part of this program. So let's see here today. All right. We're here to present our homeless outreach team and some of the stuff that we've done over the course of the last few years. We made some significant strides and we're here today to kind of highlight some of those for you. So we're going to focus on the past, the present and the future. Okay. All right. we're going to touch on three things today. They're going to provide a performance-based overview of the host team, outline the current response landscape and present some proactive planning measures that we're taking for the A-line. All right. So a couple of years ago, in actually August of 2022, I presented a strategic plan. It was basically our approach that we're going to take over the course of the future of the department for the city. We really wanted to focus on some key points, some of those points that were going to help us move the city forward and put a strategy together. So we knew what we were doing and we're working collectively. We wanted to focus on wraparound services, which were outreach, engagement and enforcement. We wanted to get people mental health support, get people the things that they needed that would make a difference for them in their life. We also wanted to work on our host deployments. So our deployments would be our officers that work part-time as a host team member. What they do is they're typically officers or detectives, but some of them work in this part-time capacity where they work on an overtime basis to do homeless outreach for the city. So it's extra work that these officers are doing and have done a great job over the last couple of years. We also wanted to review and author ordinances for the city, kind of look at what we had in place and then kind of see what we needed for the future. We also wanted to purchase an outfitted C container to store bulk property. All this was because of the need, right? So the rising numbers of the unhoused population, this need came to the forefront. So this is what we came up to, came up with as an approach for the future. All right. As a part of the program, we developed some performance-based matrix. This was going to help us gauge how we're doing. This was looking at statistical data to kind of evaluate what we're doing and what we need to do. So we're going to look at the total contacts, the number of service connections, the reduction in repeat services and our collaborative effort. So this is like a really key component for us, being a small city, is how we work together to solve these problems. So as you can see on the bottom there, there's a lot of different people that work with us and those people are key to our success. All right. So we'll look at some of the numbers here. So, excuse me. So code H calls. So this is a way we track our calls for the police department. So when there's a call related to an unhoused individual, we track it with code H. So essentially the officer or the dispatchers flagging it as code H. And this is the numbers. So in 2022, that's starting in September 2023, you have the whole year, 24, the same thing the whole year in 2025 through, all the way through April, through April 2025. The total CFS, those are going to be our calls for service. So these are amount of calls for service we are receiving for the whole year and the percentage of them that are related to just the unhoused. As you could see, what's important here is the data shows it's we're trending downward, right? And our calls for service related to the unhoused. And this is a direct correlation to all of our services that we're providing. It's showing that it's working, right? So like, we're really doing a good job in this. However, what proposes the biggest change is the A-line, right? We don't know what that's going to do for us. All right. So reports. Let's just take a quick look at our reports. So in the last couple of years, we've received 4,416 calls for service. Our reports kind of have skyrocketed, right? There's a lot of time our officers are taking on these, on these calls. And it's basically removing our law enforcement from, from other, you know, police work that they are doing. There's 50 distinct crimes that we flagged as different crimes that they're handling. So they have to real, real like wide variance of calls that the officers are going on, which is, which is challenging, right? You're trying to figure out what tool works for each person. And there's, it could be, it could be anything, right? So you got to have a lot of tools available to you. Keynote, so the three, top three were trespassing warrants and narcotics that we were going on. I kind of laughed when I put this slide on here because it's so busy. And I was talking to Avon about this earlier. It's a little bit challenging to read this, but I think again, it shows and highlights all the different things officers are doing. So it could be a simple trespass, it could be a sexual battery, being an open container arson. There's a really like wide number of different things that these officers are handling out there. So again, why it's important that we have our tools in place and our people in place to help combat some of this. And again, sorry for having to turn your head sideways like that, but. I know, I know. We went back and forth until we put this slide in and ultimately we're like, yes, because we want to see people turning their head over.
Hey, these are, okay. These are total, all the different, all the different crime types, not just related to housing, just all the different things that you all deal with.
Yes, exactly.
But it is important to realize and understand in the numbers that are at print upwards, those ones actually have a lot of. So the ones that take a lot of really.
Yes. And, and real quick, so like this is data that there's a human error, right? So it could be skewed. There's probably a lot more than this, but it has to be flagged properly. So say we go on a call, it's put in as a, as a petty theft at target, right? And then the suspect is an unhoused person. The officer might forget to put the code H. So it happens. So the numbers are obviously probably going to be a lot higher, but just All right. So some of our tools. So Alacata, we use them for a couple of different things, but this is our outreach, our outreach team. For me, this really helps paint the picture of how we're, how we're serving these people that need the help in the community. If you look at, you know, again, it's the time from 9/1 to 5/23 of 2025, 950 people were contacted. So that's a huge number for a small city like us. Moreover, even larger than that is if you start to look at some of the, some of the fine print there, 48 individuals received interim housing. Two people received permanent housing and 12 people received SUD treatment, which means they're getting the care for whatever they're going, whatever they're going through. It might be drug abuse, alcohol abuse, or some, some type of addiction. This is really like significant numbers and I really want to highlight, this is the work that, that the people do, like behind the scenes. This is the stuff that officers aren't doing. This is the stuff that our partners in our city are doing when we're not, when we're just doing our patrol, they're doing their thing behind the scenes. I really look at them as kind of like the broker of resources. They go out there and they recontact the same individuals over and over and over again. You heard me talk a couple of years ago about building trust. Well, they're the ones that really do a lot of the groundwork on building that trust. They'll call in the resources they need, which could be us, which could be our mental health team, could be a number of things, but outstanding group of people. Just for a little context there, it's one or two outreach navigators. They also have a vehicle that they could transport. So say someone needs help, they need a new driver's license, they could, they can pick them up and take them down to the DMV, get them a license and bring them back. In the meantime, they could be building that rapport and working on finding some housing for them or finding out what they need. What, what's really going on? What's the root of the problem? And how do we get them to the point where they can be self-sufficient? All right. So this is also another component of our team that we brought in over the last couple of years. Super proud of this because this is unique. And I've talked to many, many cities about this program and they want to know like, what are we doing? How do we do this? How do we get to the point where we're so successful with having an integration of a mental health team? So those who don't know, they're based out of our police department. There's three types of models they get. In the model, there's three types of responses they can go on. One could be, they could be dispatched themselves to go to a problem where someone's suffering some type of mental health crisis. That's going to be a really low level type of crisis and they're going to be able to help whatever they're going through on their own. The second would be, it would be dispatching a co-response model. So officers dispatch and this team is also dispatched simultaneously. The team stages until the officers deem that the call is safe and then they'll send them in. The third would be officers go on scene. And if you could look here, 50%, 58% of this is this type of response call. It's basically the officer goes there and determines this is a mental health related call. We need to get the professionals there. Not that we can't handle it, but insert the professionals, remove the law enforcement, get us officers back out in the streets and insert the professionals that can get them the support and the help that they need. Huge component of our team. Really, it's kind of been, it's been game changing for us to have this. And again, this is something that's extremely unique to our city. We've worked really hard to integrate them into the police. And I think that's where other cities are missing the mark is they don't know how to integrate civilian employees with law enforcement. It's, you know, we're not used to it, but it's worked. And so really what I wanted to highlight is over the last two and a half years, we've worked really hard to get to where we're at. The data really shows and demonstrates that the people involved in all this, our programming, they've done a great job and it's working. But we don't know what's, what's next, right? So we have an unknown variable that we're going to have to deal with. So to present that, that'll be.
My name's Sergeant Flores.
Good evening. So as we're looking through the numbers, definitely the co-response model is working. We see that it's working. We see that the number of code H calls are going down because it's directly correlated to our partners that are, we, that are integrated with us going out on these calls and basically taking over, letting our, our officers back on the street to handle what the officers should be handling. But that doesn't mean that our problem is over. And that brings us to our A-line expansion. I've kind of been tasked with dealing with Metro and Gold Line, or now A-line, since 2018. I've been working with them to clean up the easements, to do, to learn what they're doing. But basically to understand what kind of impact it's going to have on our city. So projected increase in transient and unhoused population near the new transit hub and transient population doesn't mean homeless. Transient is like, we're going to have a transient population in the city that's going to expand and contract throughout the day. It could be 1,000 to 5,000 people, depending on foot traffic. That brings a whole nother, that brings a whole nother element to the Arrow Corridor. Our focus mainly with the host team has been on the foothill corridor and our businesses and our partners and property management. But now we have another issue that's on the Arrow Corridor that may bleed into the downtown area, residential areas, which is new for us. The anticipated rise in calls for service in transit adjacent zones, I'll talk about that a little bit with Los Angeles County Transit Service Bureau and how that's going to work. Increased demand on police sanitation, emphasis on inter-agency coordination, which is that Laverne PD and TSB. And then again, like I said, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department Transit Service Bureau and what their response to that right of way is going to be. So our strategic plan, we're definitely going to go and review and revise our ordinances to address quality of life issues. There are, we did identify some holes in ordinances that specifically address where the platform's at, where the parking structure or parking lot is at, and then everything around there. And especially downtown, there's not a lot of postings as far as ordinances go. The expansion of our SGB care team, hours and presence. Currently, they work during the weekdays, only Monday through Friday. Wednesdays, they don't, do not work. So we're trying to figure out and, and a way to expand those services so that it's 24 hours and covers the entire week. Part of that is SGB care itself. Part of that might be Tri-City and their new mental health crisis team. And then with them, working with them on learning how to integrate them into the same way that SGB care is. The deployment of transit-focused outreach and patrol zones, definitely a new area for us. There's going to be a lot of foot traffic, a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of unhoused people on the transit, on, on the train itself. So we'll definitely have a focus in that area. Like I said, we've been focused on the foothill corridor. We're going to definitely have to focus on the Arrow Corridor. And then the implementation of a dedicated full-time community impact team. That's, and that's predicated on staffing. I mean, we, our officers do a really good job of addressing homelessness and working overtime to, to specifically do host-related activities. However, it is overtime. It is take, it does take away from their off time, their families, you know, and it's, and it's not, it never goes away. So it's, it really, it really, it takes a lot of time to develop these relationships, work with our, our partners, and then actually address specific problems throughout the community. And these problems come up all the time. We get emails about them all the time. And we get emails about them on our days off. When we come in, we start having to work and try to figure out what we're going to do with these, these specific problems within the community. Let me talk a little bit about like the Los Angeles County Transit Service Bureau. So they're the jurisdiction, they have the jurisdiction of the, of the train. The right of way is a little bit different than MetroLink. The right of way for the A-line is they have the whole line, they have the parking lot, they have the platform and they have the trains. Much different than MetroLink. MetroLink, we, we own everything except the train. So technically it's not our jurisdiction. We don't, the, the area around the train platform and the parking lot is not our jurisdiction, but that does not mean that we will not go there, do our extra patrols and actually direct enforcement and outreach when we need to. TSB, and we've been collaborating with them, meeting with them, under, trying to understand like what their response is. They're going to have a one, two man car for, for, for platforms, for cities. So one, two man car. That's it. You have one, two man car and a third-party security, two-man team at the end of line, which is Pomona. So in that, we're trying to figure out what our response is, right? Like, so if there's some crime that's, that happens on the platform or in the parking lot, it's again, not our jurisdiction, but what is their response time? Doesn't mean that we're not going to be there and it doesn't mean that we're not trying to work to get that community impact team to be able to address those issues and service our community the way they need to be serviced. We don't know exactly what the response times is. And the Los Angeles County Transit Bureau, they have, they do have mental health crisis teams. There's two of them, but it's for the entire county. So in talking with them, they have told me that they're estimating at the end of line, they have a team that goes on and basically kicks everybody off the train that doesn't have, that shouldn't be there, shouldn't, doesn't have a ticket. Their estimating is anywhere between 20 and 35 people per night that they offload over at the Citrus Station in Azusa. So these are, these are the problems that we're trying to work towards solving. We've gotten ahead of the curve definitely with our host team and our partners, but it's, there's a lot of work still to be done. So our strategic goals, establish permanent full-time outreach enforcement team, expand access to transitional housing resources. We need that. That's how we, that's how we, that's how we work with our unhoused population. Invest in technology, real-time and mobile response capacity and then identify strategies to deter loitering with increased education and active enforcement. And that goes with our, our identifying what ordinances we can establish in those
I could just say that's a lot of information and we really had to condense a lot of different things that we wanted to present. But the most important thing is that you have people, you have a police department that, that really cares and are really going to do whatever it takes. and are really going to do whatever it takes to make a difference and, and find solutions that are going to be lasting, not just temporary Band-Aids. But that's, that's the old way of doing things. So hopefully you feel like you have some support from the police department in that we have a plan. Okay. Some of the plan looks a little, little foggy, right? We don't know exactly yet. Once it starts to clear, we'll have direction and we'll get it done.
I, I just want to say that the relationship you guys have built with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, with La Cota, SGP Care, all these, and also with our Parks and Recreation, you guys have done an amazing job. But you've taken the tools and there's a lot of cities, like you were saying, that don't know how to do it. They haven't got it together and we're out there. Every one of these cities that's doing this is doing it successfully. I think one of our biggest concerns, as you mentioned, the last part is our station safety. And I know that there's discussions with Metro right now because when this thing comes online, our biggest concern is what's coming on, what's coming off as far as people that don't want to visit our town and, and enjoy themselves, but to maybe cause trouble. And I know that these, the Metro has cleaned up the line tremendously from what they did before. I know they're forming their own police department, but that's going to take a number of years. And so I know that, I know Ken's been working on it and I know Chief Gonzalez has been working on it. Because if that's their property, then if we roll people, if there's an issue and they can't respond, there needs to be compensation for our officers. And I know we have bikes now. We have a lot of different things which we're preparing for. And I think you guys are much more prepared because we've had lessons from other communities that have had, let's just say serious situations, considering a lot of these stations were open and COVID hit and it was utter chaos. You know, a lot of the stations are cleaner now. They have more sanitation, but they also have more policing. So, but you guys have done an amazing job. Kudos to you and your staff. And we're taking and being gentle with our homeless population that have issues, serious issues. But I think as we get closer, which is coming, as the station's probably going to open mid-August or before September 19th is what I understand, it should be open. But to let our community know, more outreach on saying what we're doing, how we're interfacing with Metro and how we're interfacing with their policing with, with our sheriff's department. Cause it's, it's critical. It's critical. And not to say it's going to be doom and gloom. It's probably a positive thing for our community. Bringing in people to come enjoy our community, enjoy it in a nice, calm, safe way. You know, spend their money here and then get back on the train and go home. So anyway.
Most definitely. Thank you for that, Mayor. We're also going to be posting on our website, some of the information that we presented here today. But one thing I want to note is that although we're a small agency, we're a part of a larger group within LA County. Currently there's about a million dollars left from some of the funding that was provided by the county, which Pomona is holding. And we're part of that group of providing a force multiplier. If we ever need it, we can join that group and, which will provide service to our platform in our area as well if ever needed. So we have a large contingent of officers who have been trained, which is one of the requirements to receive that funding on an overtime base, overtime basis. But we are part of that larger picture and we're looking forward to this next fiscal year potentially having additional funding to cover that as well. So we are part of the, the larger regional team with Pomona, Glendora and some of Monrovia and some of the other local cities. So that's an important aspect of it, although whatever we need, we have a larger group to contend with.
It's nice to know that collaboration that you guys have built with LA Impact and LA Clear is really important. But it's also important to our relationship, which we have, I think, a very good relationship with Metro. We have Tim Sandoval on Metro, but also Stephanie Wiggins. But I think we've been discussing about, it's nice to know that we have the money there, but we're going to need to have those resources because it's, the dynamics is going to change. We've never been a destination stop. And it's going to be an interesting transition, but I, I'm glad to hear that we're prepared. But the more information we get out to the community to let them know what we're doing, a situation like that where there's money in there that we don't have to go on our general fund to fund situations that do occur. You know, and there will be situations, there, there are going to be situations, but hopefully we keep those to an extreme minimum.
Right. With our current model, which they described today, and with the addition, if we ever need additional staffing, like Pomona, they have a full-time team. Glendora has a full-time team, Monrovia has a full-time team. We can put some folks on overtime, combine those teams together and they can also come here to assist us.
We're prepared.
Yes, sir.
Councilor La.
I just want to say, I know I've said this before to Lieutenant Alrato and I want to include you, Sergeant Flores in this too, but thank you so much for all that you do for this program because it is incredible to see how far it's come. And I really appreciate that, the compassion about it. And I'm getting teary-eyed about it only because, you know, growing up as a kid, I had a family member who had mental illness and the way that police dealt with him is a far cry from what you guys are doing. And I wish that was in existence then and I'm glad it's in existence now. And I do have to say that, you know, you're not just bragging to say that other people look to what we're doing. I hear from Tri-City quite a bit that the model you're putting forward is incredible and that they really would like for you to be able to teach others how to do what you're doing. And it's no small feat. You see in the news all the time, all the bad things that can happen when integrated services aren't there, when compassion isn't there. And I think you've gone a long way to making sure that we're not part of those negative headlines and that we're part of the solution for the long term. So thank you and your team very, very much for everything that you do.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that.
Another caveat, there's not one person at the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments that doesn't just sing your praise. That goes for all of you about what you do here and that we are a role model for some communities that don't know what they're quite doing. And I mean, hopefully this catches on because it's, it's just compassionate, but it's also the fact that we've got great relationships. But you guys are top-notch. You are absolutely on the top of the echelon of almost perfection for what we're doing. So just so you know that, and that comes straight from Marissa Creed, the director of the COG and all of her staff. There's not one time when I go to a meeting where I say, oh my God, I love what we're dealing with your people. They respond. They take care of the people in a kind and very soft manner and try to take care of them along with the La Cota, along with, with the SGP Care, along with Tri-City. But just, just so you know, it does not go unnoticed and you guys have set the bar, which is really good because other communities need to jump on and get on this and start doing it the way we do it. So, thank you.
I, I do want to add one last note. You brought up a great point. We were actually approached by Harvard University who did a study and I'm not sure if they published it yet, but it's, it's pending. And a lot of what they brought up is in fact, how is our program successful in some of these other cities who have applied millions and not billions of dollars have not been able to get something so successful. So I'm looking forward to that. We were all interviewed by it and, and one of the comments that I made was that everybody up here in the, in the DIA, in the community really supported what we were doing. And we were creative on how we, our approach was and we continue to be that way. So, I mean, it's, it's really, it took a village to do so.
And what I want to point out though, Chief, I, I want to put praise on you and your leadership because when it was proposed to unsworn people to come out and do with you and work alongside, there are other departments that said, no, I don't want to do that. But because Laverne actually does do things the right way and not their own way, that you were comfortable and the trust that you had to have the San Gabriel Valley Care Team come alongside you. You were not afraid of, of the unsworn people to help and that you knew the value that they were going to give you and, and not just the, the, the strong heart, police work that you had to do, but the soft hands that they were going to help and, and, and provide for you. That trust of, in our police department and all of our officers really working alongside of them really is what made this go. And that's because of the leadership that you guys all put together and that the trust that their work is important, just as important or sometimes more important that you say that they're going out there by themselves and trying to diffuse it before because if they see a police officer, it might expand their, their fears. Though that they're only here Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays during the daytime. We know that that is not the, the only times that people are having issues or need the support from the team and really looking about what we need to do to expand that time. But the way our officers work alongside with the care shows that we want to be transparent and do the things the right way. So appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
And this wouldn't have happened without Yvonne Duran and her staff also. The collaboration between our own staff is instrumental in making this successful because I know Yvonne's just the same as you guys with your, with the great kudos that you get from the COG. Is the same with Director Duran. You guys are synonymous with, with just the fact that this is how it works. This is how we do things. This is the role model. So again, kudos to Yvonne and her staff because it takes a team, unsworn, non, you know, sworn. It takes a team and it takes everybody to just lay down and go, how are we going to address this? How are we going to take care of these people that need help? And, and, and obviously shows in the numbers. We're doing a great job, you know, so we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo that and we couldn't do it without the partnerships that we have with, including our own people from Public Works and Parks.
All of our city staff. Thank you.
Want to take too much time away from, you know, the great comments that my colleagues have said, absolutely, you know, motivation, dedication and having the ability, wanting to really affect change in this world, you know, starts with, starts with you guys. And you're able there to provide that compassion to those that need it the most. And sometimes the required, you know, enforce the law, it is what it is, right? That delicate balance, I've always been told you got to have. And so the numbers don't lie of itself. If you look at a small team element like yourself, it's able to impact from over 250 in September 1st, 2022. If you look at the numbers, it was continuously trending downward, right? To where it is over close to 60% reduction. That's huge for a small team element like yourself. Well, it's just you guys. Hey, come on, right? Yeah. I can think about the county, other departments that have spent millions on it. Like you said, Chief, I mean, for Harvard to come out to actually wanting to have, understand there's, there's some sort of good science in it. So I don't want to take too much time away from that, but hey, God bless you and Godspeed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final presentation will be the new city email domain and format and updated website. We will call senior analyst Aaron Bilstein Ford. No, you're, you're the old one.
Good evening again, everyone. I will be really quick, I promise. As I know you probably follow really closely to the state assembly bills, 1637, I'm sure you have memorized is, in the past couple of years, the, the state passed the Assembly Bill 1637 that local governments needed to conform with a .gov domain or a .ca.gov domain. So with that change, I have two, two exciting things to share that we've done. The first is that we have moved to laverne.ca.gov. That's the city's website only at the moment. No change to lvpd.org, no change to lavernefire.org. But the city's main website has now been updated to laverne.ca.gov. Alongside that, we've also had a rebrand of our main city website just to sort of freshen it up for 2025 and try to increase access to the important things that are important to our residents. So you'll see at the top, we have these little fun oranges that are what we find that people are asking the most for, where they're looking to connect with us. If you scroll down a little bit more, you have our calendar where we have it split up between events and meetings that we can show what's going on in our community, what meetings we have, how to get connected. And our social media feed is right next door to it. That's our Facebook feed, right? Connected. You can see what's going on there. For those people, residents who don't have social media, that when they still get directed to our website, they can still connect with us and see what's going on, what we're putting there. And then this is probably the newest section to our homepage. We have this additional set, set, section of buttons. And if you can scroll down just a little more, you'll see there's six of them. And again, what those are is connecting us to the services that our community accesses most, including public safety, police and fire. That directs, when you click that button, it goes right to their website where they have all the, the information that you might need when you're, when you're working with them. And then we have our announcements, our news and, and then all the other pages of the website are also updated. But the homepage is probably the most dramatic change. Again, the goal of this was just to increase the connectivity with our residents, remove some barriers by updating it to a .gov domain. You have that more assuredness that you're really contacting your government and your local agency. And it's not just someone trying to spoof and say, no, I really am Laverne. We really are Laverne and we're laverne.ca.gov. And then with that, just that last caveat is that the other big thing that changed is city employee emails. So now all employees, city, police and fire have an @laverne.ca.gov. So it is E. Beilstein@laverne.ca.gov. It is Jay Ranels@laverne.ca.gov. It is S. Gonzalez, the police chief@laverne.ca.gov. So please send us some emails to show us that you watched this presentation. So we know, just that you write it down right there. But so anyway, that agency wise, now we have that sort of united, we are all one agency with one email address. It's not trying to remember which person has which, which email address. We're all one. But that's it. It's pretty exciting. Hopefully you'll see some changes roll out over the next, next few days, next few weeks as we keep tweaking things and making it a little bit better. But that's our big adjustment right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Aaron. That is our final one. Now we go to announcements of upcoming community events. This is not a public comment. This is announcements of upcoming community events to make it very clear. But first, I want to highlight what I believe was a wonderful celebration of the Fourth of July here in Laverne. I don't know who went, but the fireworks and the music were exceptional. The crowd was down, but it was, it was amazing. The best fireworks show. I, I don't know how many people told me, oh my gosh, it's the best fireworks show. The best music and yes, you're welcome. The entire was incredible day spent with friends and family. I want to thank, I want to thank and highlight the service to our community by our community volunteers and city employees, which were vast. Some who worked the entire day to make sure the day was safe and fun for all of us. So thank you to all of our city staff, police, fire and members of the Friends of the Fourth of July Committee, Wendy, as well as other community volunteers taking part in the day. The parade is the highlight of the day and I think it's time to call Candace up here. Embarrass you. So the city council has the distinct honor of recognizing people whose dedication, passion and unwavering commitment to our community exemplify the very best of public service. The city's Above and Beyond program is a recognition program that honors employees who display outstanding effort, interdepartmental teamwork or continued commitment to excellence. And I will say that Candace was there the entire day, just about. I saw you every corner. I think there was, well, I did see your two sisters. So you must've split yourself because they were all over the place. So, but it was you. I saw you at the beginning, the middle and at the end. It's our pleasure to present the Above and Beyond Award to Candace Bocock. Candace has been with the city Laverne for nearly 23 years. Round of applause for that. And in that time, she has shown time and again that she is not only a dedicated professional, but also loves the community. I will attest. One of the most visible examples of her commitment to her leadership and coordinating one of Laverne's most cherished traditions, the Fourth of July Parade. The last several years, Candace has taken the lead in planning, executing this monumental event. And let me tell you, it is no small task. It's floats, it's parades, it's the people, it's motorcycles. It's trying to make everybody where they're supposed to be and when they're supposed to be there. Each year, the parade draws around 10,000 attendees from managing countless logistics to juggling endless requests. Council members that are paying, fielding questions, facilitating accommodations, yes, sometimes handling a few unhappy participants. Candace does it all with grace, patience and professionalism. What makes her work even more admirable is that she does all this without seeking recognition and often on her own personal time. So that's why we're recognizing you now. Candace, your efforts do not go unnoticed. You represent the heart of the public service. You work, you help build the spirit of Laverne and pride we feel in calling you. So tonight is with deep appreciation and gratitude that we announce you as receiving an Above Award. You have truly gone above and beyond and Laverne is a better as a view. Thank you for all you do. Above and Beyond Award, Marshall's polls. In recognition of employee excellence, this certificate is presented to Candace Bocock for outstanding service to the city Laverne, above and beyond normal expectation, presented this seventh day of July, 2025. And you really did an amazing, amazing job. It was flawless. The parade was great. Everybody had a great time. Everybody had a great time. People were crazy on the parade route, but everybody stayed in line, towed the line. We had great coverage by our TV coverage. The video is really cool, but you did an outstanding. Thank you again. Would you like to say anything?
Just that, just that it wasn't work and the department and a lot of other staff. Definitely couldn't have done it without them.
But it takes someone to make sure everything goes in place, but thank you. It does take a village, so thank you. Are you taking those kids to dinner now or something? Oh, ice cream or In-N-Out? Ice cream or In-N-Out? They're leaving. Thank you, Candace. Cash just told me that In-N-Out has a Neapolitan shake. I think that's called Napoleon. It's Napoleon shake, not any Neapolitan shake. Okay, there you go.
It's the secret menu. Secret, secret.
Okay, continuing with announcements and upcoming events, we have Adrian Romero from Laverne Library.
Adrian.
Adrian. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I would like to introduce some events that will be taking place at Laverne Library this month. On Thursday, July 17th at 1, we'll be holding a watercolor painting program for teens ages 13 to 17. During this workshop, teens will learn the basics of watercolor painting through Georgia O'Keefe's distinct painting style and create unique floor artwork. And then on Saturday, July 19th at 2:00 PM, we'll be holding a workshop for children ages 5 to 12 called Rudy's Radical Science Show, where a chemist will show the magic of science. During this program, people can learn about physical and chemical reactions and the program will end with a fun, chemical, magical demonstration. And on Saturday, July 26th at 1:00 PM, we'll be holding a cooking demonstration for adults. Chief Vivian, I'm sorry, Chef Vivian will demonstrate some Vietnamese home cooking dishes that she learned from her grandma in Saigon and from her mother in Brooklyn. She will recreate these dishes and show how these dishes can be made with local ingredients. And there will also be samples for these for those in attendance. And I just want to mention that all three of these programs were funded by Friends of the Laverne Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Appreciate that. Thank you. Sherry Best.
Well, from now on, it's going to take two of us to present all the activities that Laverne Historical Society.
Well, first of all, the truck was running and it was amazing.
And here's pictures.
We posted those pictures as you guys came in and it was the thing was, and it was actually tuned right. The older cars that they had on the show, little too much fuel was peeking out. That truck was doing just fine.
I'll tell you, our secret weapon is Robert Carter, who came and worked at the house and got the muffler all taken care of and.
Brand new bed, too. The bed's beautiful.
Brand new bed. Thank you, American Truck Bodies and Repair. And yes, we are up and running and had a wonderful time. Who doesn't love a good party? So I will add my thanks to Mayor Hepburn's for all the people who made this a really wonderful event. If any of you have given a big party, you'd know it only appears flawless because you worked so hard behind the scenes to make it happen. So it was a great event. We had a good time. Five years, I think it's been to get the truck ready and now it's ready. And my plan is to bring it all over Laverne to everything. I hope you see that truck everywhere from now on. So it is still residing in my driveway, but we have room for it, so that's good. I also really want to thank Laverne TV because it's true. When you're in a parade, you don't get to see, except maybe the people who have the event right in front of you, you don't see anything else, but we'll be able to see the entire parade and as soon as I receive the YouTube link from, wait a minute, having a brain fade, Laverne TV, help me, Claudia, sorry, Claudia, Claudia Gonzalez, I will post that on our website so you can watch the thing from front to back and how lucky we are to have the services of Laverne TV. So kicking off the summer, the Historical Society has come out with our next infusion of absolutely awesome apricot jam. So if you like apricots and you like apricot jam, this is good stuff. So apricot jam to be followed by our Pucker Power Plum Jam. And then in the fall, we'll be back to our pomegranate jam, but we have all those things for a modest donation, which will continue to help us to keep the truck up and running. So we're going to be spending a lot of time this summer planning next year's events. Our next big public event is going to be on the 23rd of August, where we have our Old Timers Potluck Picnic. And if you're not a member of the Historical Society, you can come be our guest and join us for a little potluck and good times. We want to bring the truck, open it up so people can climb up into the bed and run around and that sounds like a kid friendly thing to me. So anyhow, thank you all so much for a great experience with the Historical Society, the parade and everything else we did on the Fourth of July. Thank you. You want to add anything, Kathy? Membership. If you're not members yet, of course, it's 20 for individuals, 25 for families, 200 for lifetime. You get wonderful newsletters, you get up to date, all the amazing events that we do and it helps us fund the projects like the truck, the displays that we do and all that and trying to hopefully someday save enough to get ourselves a museum.
We need a museum.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to announce that the local theater, Ophelia's Jump Productions, which is not in Laverne, but is a longtime Laverne Chamber member, is having the We Will Rock You, the musical at Sontag Theater at Pomona College in Claremont, July 10th through 13th and 17th through 20th. Pre-show is at 7:00, the show is at 8:00. It's a nonprofit theater, wonderful, wonderful place. High school and college students with IDs are $48. Kids 13 and under are 40. Lawn tickets are $50. General admission is $80. If you are a member of the Laverne Chamber, you can contact them to get the secret code to get the Laverne Chamber member discount to attend. And groups of 10 or more sold in at one time are $60 each. So I'm going to be there. It's a wonderful, it's going to be super, super fun. They've done Shakespeare every year for the last 11 years. This is the first time they've done something like this, so please come.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Johnson, any announcements?
No announcements for me, Kim. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Raymond.
Mayor and council, if you look on your guide here, there are a lot of activities that are coming up and it's easy to miss some, so I'd like to add a couple onto this list. So this Thursday at 5:30 here in the chambers will be the Ad Hoc Water and Sewer Committee meeting. And we will also have another one Wednesday, the 31st, also here at 5:30, 30th, I'm sorry, the 30th. I would encourage as many people to show up as possible. We've been through these meetings now for almost a year. These will probably be our last two meetings, so it's down to the numbers, down to crunching and down to, you know, where where life gets real. So if you want to see what contributes to our recommendations when we get to that point, these meetings are very, very important and all residents and business owners are invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Any other announcements? Okay, I've got a real quick one here. We have got the the Amazing Laverne 10 U Girls All-Star Softball Team has made it to the National Championship Tournament in Roseville, July 22nd to July 27th. This is the huge milestone because this is the first time Laverne history that they've made it this far. So that's, like I say, that is in that is in Roseville. They're looking, I just posted a bunch of stuff. They posted how you can donate to their website because it's July 22nd, which is very shortly that they're going to be going. But this is huge. We love our kids' sports, so this is just another one of those amazing things that our youth sports are doing. So if we can support that, look on the Facebook page, they'll be posting it, how to donate to the 10 U team's first national journey. And just a little update on the Afaba Page camps. I know we're going to be posting some stuff. Hopefully, city staff is going to go up to the camps. Right now, Page is empty. It's going under some repairs and renovations. There's approximately 49 incarcerated youth on the Afaba side, which is, that's a fine number, but our concern is to make sure that who is in those camps and what the renovations are and when they start to populate Page, who's going there and for what reason they're going there. So we're very concerned about that. We want to make sure that our residents are safe. We'll have more information. We're working on a walk of the facility with the camp director, is it Villar? And I want to thank Mayor Protem Cash. He's pretty much involved in this with the probation department, but they've been very receptive of us coming up there. And then I think down the road very shortly, we'll have, hopefully have some residents with us to come and view the facilities there to make sure that what's going on there is what our residents want and also what we want and make sure the probation department follows the rules and guidelines of who's supposed to be there. So that's a little update on that. So, yes, Mr. Crosby.
Yes, I was at the Music in the Park and the Inland Valley Repertory Theater gave a little presentation of their performance that's going to run July 19th to August 3rd of the of Newsies. And so they sang a little bit before the Music in the Park two weeks ago and it was a really good showing. And so it's going to be at ULV's Morgans Theater.
Very good. Very good. Any other announcements?
I have one, Mayor, if I may. If you haven't heard yet and you didn't receive the flyer at the parade, Damian High School is going to be having a car show. It is on August 9th and just so you know, all proceeds from the car show will benefit the Damian Spartan Regiment's trip to the 2025 Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. So that's, that is huge to see our amazing, one of our, one of our amazing schools, although not my alma mater, I have been on Bearcat for life, you know what I mean? But my son does go to school there. But having said all that, say it's a Laverne, Laverne School and it's something if you can go support. It's against Saturday, August 9th, the Damian High School's $40 pre-register, 50 at the gate. And if I can, if possible, I can maybe share that with folks. I'll have it on my social media and others, but see what we can do. Just a friendly reminder, it is August 9th from 9:00 AM and you can bring, open to classic cars, muscle cars, exotics, antique, antique cars and trucks will be there for you to display. So you can bring your books, Biken.
I don't have one.
I thought you had a pink one.
No, I gave that up.
Oh, that's understandable. But you know what? It's okay, I'll be there. So come on down, have a great time. Thanks.
Okay, I forgot one little, we have Senator Susan Rubio for Coffee and Conversation, including a legislative update, Saturday, July 12th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Laverne Community Center here and our own, right behind us here. For more information, if you want to call, it's 626-430-2499. But she will be here. She's dynamic, she always got great information. She's one of our leaders of our community. She's been so generous to us, the university campus. She's just an amazing person, constantly giving to our communities here. So she's a wonderful partner with us, especially with SGV Care and some of the other things the Police Department is doing. She's been just an amazing partner. So it'd be nice to just have a chat and she's very personable. She'll answer the questions she can and she'll let you know when she can't, but she's very upfront and a really, really nice person. So again, Saturday, July 12th, 2025, 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Laverne Community Center. It'd be a good thing for us to be there and show our appreciation and have some great questions. So any other announcements before Wendy dies over here?
There is a tri-city mental health authority meeting this coming, not this Wednesday, but the 16th at 5 o'clock at their offices in Pomona for anyone who is interested and you can participate via Zoom if you would like.
Thank you, Wendy.
July 16th.
Okay, we're going to close announcements and we're going to go to consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are routine and will then be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council or a member of the audience requests separate discussion or just wants to make a statement on one of the items. Counselor, any request to pull any items? Mr. Domer, any request?
There were no requests.
With that, do I have a motion to approval of the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second.
Second. We're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Domer.
Yes. Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lau.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cash Fegida.
Yes.
Mayor Hepburn.
Yes.
Item pass 50, moved by Crosby, seconded by Lau.
Thank you very much. I want to let you know that there are these flyers for Susan Rubio's. There are some on the counter right over here. There's a whole bunch of them, so if you want to grab one, please help yourself. There are seven items tonight on the discussion calendar. The first discussion item is the city of Laverne 2025 Strategic Plan. Commissioner Domer, please call up the staff member who will be reporting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. JR is going to be handling this one. And actually, we have help. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Strategic planning is a collaborative process used by organizations, including local governments, to define their direction and priorities, allocate resources effectively and align internal and external stakeholders around a shared strategy. It provides a structured framework to assess current conditions, anticipate future needs and set actionable goals to guide long-term decision-making. The city of Laverne's last strategic planning session held in 2017 focused on pressing fiscal issues resulting in significant efforts such as a pension obligation bond and consideration of initiating Measure LV sales tax. Tonight, we had a facilitator that helped us through that process and Rochelle Hares-Mindy is here, so she'll go ahead and talk about what we did that day and then some of the outcomes that I'll come back and do the recommendations. Is the clicker on the?
Clicker is not.
It's someone's clicker. Oh, there it is. We got it. We're hiding it. Rick's got it. He just didn't want to be clicked.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Ranels. Good evening, Mayor Hepburn, Mayor Protem Cash Fegida, Councilmember Lau, Councilmember Crosby, Councilmember Johnson, somewhere out there remotely, and City Manager Domer. It's an honor to be here tonight and I can't believe it's been a whole year, a year, how about a month and a half since we started to do this work. But it's great to be here tonight to really celebrate, hopefully the culmination of what we can approve as a mission statement and our strategic priorities. Before I go into the process, I just want to say as an observer tonight for tonight's city council meeting, it really was very synergistic to see what the items are for discussion, some of the concerns that were brought up, some of the presentations today and how it really aligned with the work that we did on May 17th and prior to that. For our attendees tonight, our residents and the other stakeholders, I just wanted to provide a general overview as to what the process looked like. Very simple, we gathered some facts, there were some reports, there's different pieces of data, we did interviews with all the council members and also with city manager and assistant city manager. We did what we called a SWOT analysis and I'll go through what the results of that SWOT analysis is, but basically we took a look at what the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities and threats are at a given time and where we are right now. And then we reviewed all those inputs. The inputs also included our community or your community survey and again, the interviews and any other data points that were part of the gathering fact stage. We then reviewed the existing mission statement and. We then reviewed the existing mission statement and the, we'll talk about the established strategic priorities based on all of the steps prior to that. And hopefully, after that, once the mission statement's approved and the strategic priorities are approved, city council with help with the staff will detail that strategic plan. And then what I would hope we're going to do is use this really as a living document to review where you're at, review the progress that has been made, and adjust accordingly. This is very small, but I really wanted to capture some of the strengths and weaknesses that were discussed on May 17th. And if I did not underscore the fact that not only did council participate in this, but we had executive staff and leadership staff participate, and again, we had public comment as well as the community survey as part of the strength, weakness, opportunities, and threats. So I just highlighted some of these here. I know there's a full report that captures this in its entirety, but I'll highlight a few things that this team had identified as strengths for the City of Laverne. And again, I think what I've heard today really just underscores the fact that this is exactly where the city council and the staff see the city at this time. Strong community engagement, strong employee connection to the community, a good working environment, a full-service city, that the city feels that they're more aware of what's going on at the state level, at the federal level, that the city is transparent, that they're adaptable, and they take pride into the work that we do here in the City of Laverne, and they're very responsive, and that the city and the city staff truly care about the people in the city. Despite the strengths, we, the team did identify some areas of weaknesses. And some of these areas of weaknesses include the rising costs, both in, with respect to employee salaries as well as pension, the lack of economic development, that there could be more work done in economic development for the city, the succession planning, who's next coming into city council and nexting commissions, and identifying that that can be an area of improvement. A lack of county collaboration was identified, also slow in modernizing, and also homeless funding sources. And also part of this exercise are identifying some opportunities and threats. So inasmuch there are strengths that are, that were identified and the weaknesses, there are also opportunities that the city sees at this time as well as some threats. The threats list looks a little bit long and lengthy, but identifying those so we can anticipate as to what the city can do to take action to address those threats will be really important. Some of the opportunities I'd like to highlight is the partnership and relationship that the city can have at the state and federal level. Partnerships to pool resources, and I heard a lot tonight about partnership also. The grant funding diversification, how do we diversify the dollars that are coming in? Can we take a look at the nightlife and entertainment district? How can we take a look at the hours and businesses around the gold line? Upgrading shopping centers, possibly looking at paid parking and attracting new businesses. And lastly in this analysis is the threats. And again, I'll just highlight a few items that were identified. And again, hearing what I heard tonight at the, as part of the presentation, but possible increased crime with the A-line, what insurance might look like, anticipated or unknown liabilities, concerns with possible wildfire threats and also just natural disasters as a whole. Not being able to anticipate what the state and federal legislation looks like can also be a threat. Increased services to address homelessness, loss of local control due to state and county regulations. And one thing I wanted to highlight about threats is these are areas that are not always within the control of the city, city staff or a council, but they are environmental threats, things that are going on in the landscape that can affect and impact city Next, we talked about strategic values, and I think this was an exciting discussion because the city council and the staff are just so proud of what they stand for. And the values is, how will we behave in this work that we're doing? So there are some values that have been identified in the previous strategic plan that includes the hometown virtues, quality of life, sound leadership, teamwork, pride, and quality of life. I always said that twice, apologize. And then also the financial management. But what we did on May 17th is also discuss other strategic values that were important to this council as well as with the staff. And you can take a look at that there. Again, hearing tonight about the Fourth of July and the Historic Preservation Society coming up and the collaboration of working with other agencies and organizations. It's not just what was identified on this list on May 17th, but it's what I saw today and I'm sure you see throughout the year. But I wanted to list all of the strategic values that were discussed on that day, and hopefully those of you at home and those of you here in the audience can really resonate with some of these strategic values that were listed. And next was really the hard work, you know, it was somewhat easy to talk about what the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats were for the city. But given all of that information, given all of those inputs, how do we prioritize the work that you are doing as a city? And so we went through different exercises, tried to group things together, and the team came up with four major strategic priorities. And this is not in necessarily any order. This room may look familiar, but all of the tape on the, down at the bottom, just ignore that. We had to make sure all of the wires were well-kept and safe. But we did it right here in this room, and this was one of the first priorities, again, not in any order, but is the first one that I wanted to highlight today, is the priority of being financially stable and a structurally balanced budget. And I will go through these on this list, but economic development was extremely important to the team. How do we attract businesses and what do we do with the empty lots? Working with the landlords, diversifying different funding streams. Can we take a look at different sales tax and grants? What can cost recovery look like for the city services? Maybe revisit that. Regionalization, how do you work as a region with surrounding agencies, cities, and other government entities? And stakeholder engagement, there's a lot of discussion around this, but how do we engage employees and unions, business associations, Chamber of Commerce, and residents? The next major area for strategic priority is stakeholder engagement. And there was a lot of discussion around this, and I think I may have seen something in the agenda today, talk a little bit about this. But looking at a resident university and the idea behind both of these universities is a forum and a means to educate, have discussion, and learn more about what residents want, what the city offers for employees, learning maybe possibly of other departments what's going on, what else is going on in the city. But it's really an opportunity and a venue to learn more and to increase that stakeholder engagement. Community events was discussed, formalizing partnerships, looking at workforce development, fostering ownership, and media communication with stakeholders. The third area of strategic priority is adaptive public safety, and I really liked this term that was chosen for this priority and being adaptive in public safety, not just saying we're going to be a safe neighborhood and a safe city. But these are the areas that were identified as part of this strategic priority, regionalized dispatch policing, regional training, being technology-driven, how do you prepare for disaster? How do you collaborate with responsiveness to whether it's a disaster or anything else in the region or in, as a city? How do you look at human services, legislative and grant advocacy, risk analysis? And lastly, focus on a metro A-line, public works, human services, homelessness as they relate to special events. And the last area of strategic priority is in resilient infrastructure, and I'm sure all the residents here in the room can, can relate to all of this. What are the things that we need to look at in the city, whether it's the street, the sewer, the trees, the lighting, pedestrian overpasses, cell tower, equipment and tools, furniture? And some of this is really related specifically to the city, the furniture, the building and city buildings, parks, and fueling station. So again, the city council and, and the staff really had these big four ideas or areas of what to prioritize the work in the next three to five years. And it's ambitious, but also it's very needed, identified as something that the city says these need to be our top priorities. And lastly, we looked at the mission statement. The mission statement is basically a statement that says, why do we exist? Why are we here? And the mission statement from the last strategic planning session was good, and I think that the city council and the staff really connected with this, resonated with this. But we wanted to see, is there anything else? Is there something more we can be succinct with? Is there something missing? And the current mission statement reads as follows. "The City of Laverne strives to maintain a full range of efficient municipal services to preserve our hometown charm and quality of life while being responsive to the community's current and emerging needs." And during our strategic planning session, we looked at this and we asked ourselves these questions. Is this still where we are? Is this still the reason why we exist? And there was a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion around that, and we took some key words, some key phrases that the team felt very important to capture as part of a revised mission statement. And so thank you to the council for providing that guidance. Thank you to Mayor Hepburn, Councilmember Lau for taking it to a smaller committee, Assistant City Manager Reynolds was part of that discussion too. And wordsmithed with what the group said, these are the things that we feel capture the mission as to why the City of Laverne exists. And with that, I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager, if you wanted to take it over from here as to what the proposed mission statement be that will be under consideration for city council tonight.
And thank you, Rochelle. The next slide shows the proposed mission statement that was worked on at the subcommittee level. I'll go ahead and read that now into the record. "The City of Laverne strives to maintain a full range of efficient municipal services while promoting financial sustainability and adaptability. The city is driven by our strong history of community inclusiveness and innovation with an appreciation of city employees at the core of our service delivery." And one thing that I'd like to mention before opening it up for comments and then moving to a recommendation, this is just the first step. Our hope is to do, at least annually, a strategic planning type session, and that was also feedback that we ended the day with when we were going around the room and having, kind of wrapping things up, was that we need to do this more often, and that's certainly a desire that Ken and I have. And so we'll be targeting February each year because we believe that timing will help us with our budget priorities as well, because that's when we start the budgeting process at the staff level.
I just want to add, I want to make sure the people that participate as well, is we invited our, our union leaders as well to the strategic planning, and some of them did come there too, but I just want to make sure that was noted.
It was quite a group. It was, it was actually a really good group. We had a very good working group with many of the different departments, so it was well, well-attended and I appreciate that. I think we should probably go to public comment right now before we do anything else. Open up public comment. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Oh, you did. Oh, yeah, we're going to read the recommendation first. Well, you actually did. We'll do it again.
The recommendation that the city council approve the attached strategic plan meeting notes from May 17th, adopt the strategic priorities identified during the strategic planning session, and adopt an updated mission statement.
Thank you, JR. We'll open up public comment. Sherry.
I would like some further clarification on what history of community means, and I would like to express a certain amount of reservations about the removal of terms like preservation. I see a lot of general statements in here, but I'm, I'm concerned that, that we may be losing some of our history and a focus on the preservation of our history. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Yes.
It's an honor to be here again and to participate in the, the changes that we're going through in this beautiful city, which I've been a part of for 62 years. Once again, I guess I didn't finish the last time I was here as to the qualifications, thanks to God. When I worked for CDC, because of the fact that I was minority female, it was giving me the opportunity to extend my education, which I could not otherwise pay for. Not going to brag about that, I'm just saying that thanks to God for that job, I had the opportunity and received many, many certifications, including several master's degrees, which I'd love to, to implement into the improvement of the city as far as the knowledge that I obtained on how to fulfill budget-friendly solutions to many of the problems that I'm ongoing hearing with my good ear. This one doesn't work. My father was a veteran, and I want to thank these wonderful servicemen and, and the women who keep this city beautiful and functioning quite well. I'm sorry, I'm looking at them when I'm supposed to look here last time. Yes, that keeps our, our continued beauty of, and heritage of this city to go fast forward and remember the past as this wonderful lady reminded us from the History Society. My family's been here. My father was born in 1928. He was here when it was Lord'sburg. His wonderful cousins, the Palamara's family, my heritage cousins. I'm glad to see the, that beautiful park that's put down there as our heritage, Lord'sburg Park. That, of course, like the young gentleman mentioned earlier, regarding to our segregated, unfortunate, you know, lifestyle back then, I'm 62, I was quite unwelcome in certain parts of the city. However, we bounced back from that, and now I'm glad to see that the diversity of all the different backgrounds that are in our city add to the lovely upcoming meals we're going to get, which I used to also partake in my CDC career when we had potlucks. They had their favorite request of myself of chicken enchiladas, but I loved having all the Thai foods and everything else that was brought to the table because of the diversity and the beauty that it brings to our community. I believe that if we ask all the old business members, and I don't mean old gray-haired like myself, that's what hair color is for, I'm too lazy to do it. Anyways, with their experience and knowledge, will help the new coming businesses to maintain their business to also last as long as the elders, the elders. I think and I believe and I've seen the pride, like our gentleman who came here. I looked, when I went to that VF post right there on Wheeler and Benita and saw the new bronze addition, I took pictures and I cried because our freedom is not free.
Do you have any specific?
Yes.
Comments on this?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Because you've got about 20 seconds.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm terrible.
That's okay.
Terrible, I ramble on. But I'd like to comment on everything because of the fact that I do have, through living experiences, very good ideations on how to, you know, budget-friendly tackle a lot of these problems, so all these wonderful people don't have to be charged additional taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? With that? Tim?
You spoke on having this done every February?
Reviewing it every February.
Reviewing it every February. How much is, how much has the city spent on this already?
Why don't we just go get the question and we'll answer it?
Okay, the city, how much have you spent on this? Is this something that you can do just on the website at your cityoflaverne.org? You know, instead of spending the money?
Well, sir, what we'll do is we'll hear your questions.
And then, and then she talked about pedestrian overpasses or bridgeways. And then, she talked about pedestrian overpasses or bridgeways. I thought this, I sat in a city council meeting about a month ago. I thought the city was broke. We were having trouble hiring firefighters for the city.
This is part of our strategic plan, which we go over almost, we haven't done it for a while.
All right. I would like answers then. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? With that, we're going to close public comment, bring it back up the dais. Mr. Domer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The contract for the consultant was $8,500, which was very good compared to what other cities nearby have done. Related to if the city can do this on its website, we have, we've done community surveys. And so, that plays into it. We did that community survey, I believe it was over the fall into late of the year last year. Those items were brought back to the city council in January and discussed. So overall, what we look to do is have this as an annual event, whether it is outside consultant facilitated or not. An outside facilitator does help with some things, but we will always be looking at what our budget is and look at that potential, whether we need to do it or not, depending on where we're going. But then also the list of that input from the community in various ways through our website too. So.
Well, I want to expand on that too. The reason, and we've never done this before, was mostly a council item that the council discussed. We involved all the departments because of the fact that our employees are core of our city here that really make life easier for our residents and all the different parts of our city, whether it be police, fire, whether it be Parks and Recreation, Public Works, whether it be our Front Water Department, whether it be our Community Development. We wanted input from everyone to see what really makes our community what it is. And it really has nothing against the Historical Society. It's more of a mission statement from our city employees, but also our city council, just to kind of push it out to say, hey, this is what we're looking at. We wanted to modify it a bit. As far as the $8,000, I think it was extremely well spent for the simple fact that we've never done this with a group of employees before. And I think it was important, as Mr. Crosby said, we had our union representatives there. We had different people from the different departments. And it was quite, as you saw the sticky notes, there was a lot. There was a lot of discussion. This isn't a final thing. We're going to be redoing this again and again and again as we move forward. We thought that it was, I would say, a little stale and it didn't really represent what our community is all about. And so, we decided that we would have this and just modify. Mr. Crosby.
In a lot of the cities around us, we're very unique as we are a full-service city, having our own fire department and police department and not partnering with the county on those items. And those are, I mean, it's a great expense for that. And saying our priorities really, we spoke last month about our budget, where we are in a budget issues and we have to really go back and really look at our budget, but really wanted to set priorities because of our full-service city and how to maintain that. Because what I hear from the residents that approach me every day is that they want to keep that full-service part of our city because of the response they get from our employee groups. And that is not only just fire and safety and police, but all of our departments.
Well, and to expand on that also, the fact that this was before our budget was passed and we brought all of our employees together to discuss this. We're a team. We want to make sure they know that this council, as it sits here, along with city management, every department, we work as a team. And we really took the bucket and dumped it out to figure it out. And we're in a fiscal deficit, but we were able to hone it down, each department with, under the direction of Mr. Domer. We're able to, you know, figure out what they needed and what they don't need. And the one thing we don't want to do is cut our services and things like that. I'm kind of trailing off. We want to make sure that we continue the things that we absolutely need to make the city a wonderful place to live. And so, that was part of the strategic plan, was the fact that we're picking out the pieces and parts, but there were hundreds of sticky notes. And so, out of those hundreds of sticky notes, the really, the core value is, is that we want to be a city where people want to come to. We want to have a city that the residents get what they pay for, but also a city that the employees enjoy working here, but are part of that whole core value of our community. And I think that's really the. Councilmember Lau, any comments?
No, I think this is just, you know, as mentioned before, that this is an ongoing document. And with any strategic plan, if it sits on a shelf, then it's of no use. And that's where it's not productive. But it was a really good meeting where everybody talked about what our priority should be in ensuring the perpetuity of the city as well as the continuity and sustainability of the city. So, you know, I urge folks, there were some residents in attendance that day, and I appreciate all the people that filled out the community survey, but that is the place, those are some places where you can be heard and where you can provide your input and your feedback.
Councilmember Johnson.
I appreciated the whole process of the survey. And I think it's important that we recognize that we may not have all the answers right now. There may be some things that weren't talked about, whether it's the history of the City of Laverne or whatever. But I think this is a very important process to do this on a regular basis, just to make sure that we are not leaving anybody out. And we're true to our employees, we're true to our budget. I think it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, on top of all the amazing services that we have, we're the only city that also have its own library and its own university and its own airport. Let's not forget that. Furthermore, we also have that opportunity here in this city that through the strategic plan is to have all the stakeholders in one room. It wasn't just, you know, my bright idea theory, right, that I could come up with. Thank God. Jesus.
There is a God.
Thank you. Well, it could have been a whole lot better. I don't know. Just saying. But you know what? It's a good opportunity. And for, to have the community involved, even is a better, so there's nothing wrong. I have very thick skin. I'm a soldier. We have very thick skin, let me tell you. But as long as we're respectful, that's, I'm all for that. You know what I mean? I don't take anything personal, as long as there's a respect issue that goes back and forth. And so, having community members, you know, maybe next time and next year, I love the fact it's going to have it again because we can make it better. So if you could let us know how we can make it better, you know, the survey is only good if you fill them out, right? It's understandable. A lot of people don't want to take the time. Maybe we can find out a way, maybe you have a greater idea to how we can make it better. Please let me know. Please let one of us know that we can see, how do we get the surveys out to you to let you know? If you want to come talk to me personally, hey, I think this is a great idea, why don't you challenge, charge up that hill? Yeah, gladly, charge up that hill. You know what I mean? But just give me these ideas that make it more beneficial for the city. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cash. With that, I think I would accept a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Real call.
Yes. Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lau.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cash Vigida.
Yes.
Mayor Hepburn.
Yes.
Five zero with Cash moving and Lau segging.
And we appreciate everybody's comments. And we always listen to everything that goes on in our community and we do value the Historical Society, as you know, very much. Preservation, yes. I got it. Thank you. Our second discussion item is the City of Laverne Sphere of Influence and Annexation Discussion. City Manager Domer, please call for the staff member who will be reporting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's going to be me. This is an item that has come up for somewhat through Councilmember, our Mayor Protem Cash Vigida, but also because we are part of the Municipal Service Review through the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO. They are looking at the unincorporated areas here in Laverne and adjoining to us, along with those in San Dimas and Claremont. So what I just wanted to do is get some comment feedback from the city council about desires for working with LAFCO, for looking at annexation potential, outreach to residents, getting their feelings through surveys and other instruments. And so, there's some information in the staff report. First of all, it talks about a sphere of influence and a sphere of influence map. And basically, when you look at that map, there is a city boundary and there's a small portion by Ramona Little School that is unincorporated on the west side of Laverne. On the east side of Laverne, north and south of Baseline.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
We'll work on that as I describe a little thing. So on the east side of the city, north and south of Baseline, there's an incorporated area. Then above, where the brassy lane Clayton area is, is another unincorporated area. There's smaller areas way up north in the foothills. So what LAFCO is going to be doing, the Local Agency Formation Commission, and they're a county agency under state powers that will look at who serves those areas the best. So the last time that LAFCO looked at our sphere of influence was in the early 1970s. So on the west side of the city.
They don't want it.
You have, even our sphere of influence or our city boundaries goes through, I think it's one of the washes.
Page 20? Like page 120? 120-ish? JR?
It's almost there.
Most. It's gone through the hole.
I just like to be JR.
But anyway, in those.
Right about, there you go. Oh, yeah. Can I ask you a real quick question?
Yes.
I know we're kind of in discussion, which I think is a great idea. The section where it's Claremont in the pink, okay? Then you've got that area, which is Live Oak Canyon, which is web school. Why wouldn't we?
So LAFCO, again, the Local Agency Formation Commission, is going to be looking at all the areas in yellow that you see on that map right there.
Okay. So they could push our boundaries out? They say, go ahead and take it all?
Yeah. So what I was explaining is, for example, let's use the west side, which is around Ramona School. It's split by the wash. And the area west of that wash is technically in the sphere of influence of San Dimas, but except for four homes on San Dimas Canyon, all the homes have a Laverne address. So even those outside are sphere. So some of those people may think they're in Laverne and we may be the first response in there. We also may be giving them water. So LAFCO is going to be looking at who is the best service provider to those areas. There's no commercial in these areas except for the little bit of yellow north of that area on the west side. That's where all this market is, a couple other little small places off Baseline. And then, there's no commercial on the east side. So cities typically annex area that brings them revenue. Because in the old days, commercial brings you sales tax and other things like that. Residential generally costs a city to serve because it's police, fire, other services like that. So those are all things that the Local Agency Formation Commission are going to look at in order to determine who is the best municipal government service those areas. Now, there are some areas in the far north above the reservoir, Brassy Lane, Clayton, that actually, some people have already asked to be annexed. Those areas are entirely within our sphere of influence. And that's a different application process and procedure. But those areas make sense because they are connected to our roads. You talk about the Web Canyon area and all that stuff. So every property that is on the west side of Live Oak Canyon has a Laverne address, but it's outside our sphere of influence at our city. And it's also a little bit more difficult to get to for public safety purposes. So our folks may be the first police responder in that area. Yeah, really, and then, yeah, and then you also look at the road issues and all that stuff. And that's what a city does not want to do, is we really don't want to take on road issues that are substandard residential with septic systems versus sewer system. But that is something through an annexation process that you could actually work out with the county to get some funding or to do some type of maintenance that when that has to happen, it's not the city taking the financial burden for it. But this is a request to begin the process, start cataloging who the resident, there's about 300 homes. We would want to set up a website on our webpage on our website and then start outreach to those residents to see, would you want to be part of Laverne formally? Right now, they're informally there. We're going to be looking at property taxes. There's a lot of property taxes that county residents pay that Laverne residents don't. So people would have a lower property tax, but on the utility user tax, the utility users' tax turn is about 1% or 1.5% higher than 20%. So, you know, little differences there. We want to put all that out so that people can what the pros, what the cons would be to the city. So that's just the ask, is to get some direction. And if so, then we'll go forward. This is going to be a, could be a year, year and a half, two-year process, some areas. If they're more readily accessible and want to be annexed, like Brassy Lane or something like that, we could probably work with the county and bring them in sooner rather than later. But overall, with the Municipal Service Review and just a process that's set forward in state law, it could be, you know, 18 years plus, but we just want to start it now. And with that, I'll take any question as will the.
I think we'll go to public comment real quick and then we'll bring it back to the dais. If we open up public comment on this item, once JR's done with his batteries. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Mr. Henley, I think we're almost ready. He's putting batteries.
Batteries? We don't need no batteries.
Good evening, Mr. Henley.
Good evening yourselves. How are you doing? Great, huh? This is right, this is right up the alley over here on Baseline, right? Maybe we can make it a safe street, right? Pull some weeds on the south side and get things set up, make it look like Laverne. I think it would also benefit that Smoke Tree and Landeros area too, because when you go into that, into the east side of Landeros and Smoke Tree, you can tell where the county section starts. I mean, it's just way different. But my questions are, as far as zone and permitting and, let's say, setbacks and stuff like that, I think that certain things would be grandfathered in, right? Like, I don't have a five-foot, on my carport, Tim, you've been there, it's right on the property line. My patio's right on the property line. And I know as far as new building permits, you have to have five feet, correct? Yes?
Yeah, I'll answer those at the end.
Okay. Oh, yeah. We can get to that later. And then, the other thing is, is obviously, we want to, you know, we'd like to see a center median and some lighting, which Laverne has all over, all over the place. But I'm opposed to flag lots. And I know Laverne has flag lots. Where, what a flag lot is, you have one driveway that goes in and then two houses. Okay? In the county, you can't have a flag lot, not in our section anyway. And I know that I have a neighbor to the north of me that has two houses, one's really kind of a trailer, was an office at one point, but they turned that into like a guest house. And then, there's the main house. And then, there's one driveway that goes up. I really, on a dead-end street, would not like, I would be totally against it if he was allowed to have a flag lot. Simple reason being is because you get two houses, skinny little driveway, and everybody's parked in front of our houses all the time during the day. I know there's no overnight parking in Laverne, but it's really inconvenient when you get a flag lot on a dead-end street. So that would be my biggest concern, besides the fact that we don't have room for sidewalks and there's no need for streetlights on St. Mark. That's about all I have. I can envision a nice, beautiful center median with some nice lights, landscaping like they have over in Pomona. Wouldn't that be great? Anyway.
Thank you, Bill.
There you go.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else wish to speak on this issue? Come on up.
Me again, Virginia Beltran. Solar panels are an excellent way of cutting the cost of electricity. A friend of mine once used a, to, a guy who was homeless, who was a. a, uh, veteran from, um, Desert Storm, big guy, homeless and out in the streets of Pomona. Anyways, he made his own, he showed me his own solar panel to, um, to energize his cellphone, other people's cellphones, since they took out the, the connections, because it was costing the city, and anyways, it was unsightly. But this gentleman came up with his own configuration to make a solar panel, just a small size, for everybody to come and charge their phones and everything else. So, I believe solar panel, because we're getting plenty of sun in summer, little things placed here and there will give us the electricity needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Janita.
I just have one question. So, this is required by the state to examine this? Um, or is this new legislation that required this? Or when did this, why did this come up now? Because I know there was talk previously about trying to annex other areas of Laverne, and it was no, for whatever reason. So, I'm just curious as to why now? And I'm sure it's budget-related? Question mark?
Thank you, Janita. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Yes.
I live right in.
Well, proposed, proposed.
They're LA County. I'm not sure, I'm just, all, all, all I'm trying to say is, those streets in those, those areas are crumbling. It's real bad. Maybe taking them underneath our wing and, you know, and then, anyways, who responds to them if there's a fire? Just, you know, we, we respond anyways, but some of the streets are just terrible. I tripped over there real bad. That was it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? We're going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it up for the dais. Uh, Mr. Domar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to answer some of the questions. Hopefully, I get them all. Um, so grandfathering is something that ultimately would come up to the city council to decide whether they allow the current zoning, you know? And most of the zoning is similar to what we have. There's some things like, in my experience with, uh, annexations and all that stuff, people worry about if there's a difference between, well, I get to have four dogs, but you only allow three dogs, and issues like that. Um, those are all, yeah, two chickens, uh, versus six. Um, th, those are all things that would be worked out during the process. Um, the issue of the center median actually, um, currently working with the state and the county to try to get that, because there's a relinquishment process, um, going forward for Baseline from the state to the county, and then working with them to get a center median. Um, working with the state and the county is a slow process. Um, so, um, yeah, I'm not sure, but, uh, uh, flag lots are also something, uh, I do believe that, um, Senate Bill Nine, which I know we do not like it, uh, allows flag lots. Um, and so, that's one of the things that we, um, are kind of faced with, is state law, no matter if it's county, unincorporated area, and it's annexed in, or it's part of our city, asserts our ability to do a lot of zoning and other items like that. So, um, but at least at that point, we have more local control, and, um, so right now, you talk about how county doesn't allow it, somebody can come in and the county has to allow it, state law. So, um, as far as why now, um, you know, it was asked, actually, Cash asked about, uh, Cash Vigida asked about it, Mayor Protem. Not be informal with you, sorry, sir. Um, and then also, in talking to Paul Novak, who is the executive director of the local agency formation commission, they were talking about how they're starting their new round of municipal service review. And LA County is a huge place. So, in talking to him and talking to the fellow city managers in San Dimas and Claremont, it's like, hey, are you, do you guys mind if we go first, if they look at our situation? And they said yes. So, uh, really looking at it, it's not a, a budget issue, it's not a money grab, because again, it costs to serve residential. Um, it's more of a, a, a community wholeness. So, there's a discussion about who's first in for fire, who's first in for, uh, police. Currently, those areas unincorporated are served by the counties, so county sheriff and county fire. But we are primarily first in, in the majority of the area, because we're closest, and that's what you want, you want immediate response. We then do a warm handoff. If we, if PD responds to an unincorporated area, if the sheriff gets there, they complete the reports, they do everything else. If you're an owner and you want to improve your house, you want to put in a, you know, renovate your kitchen, do something like that, electrical permit, you've got to go to Arcadia right now if you're in the unincorporated area. If you're in the city, you would come to the city of Laverne. Um, so there's little things like that about, you know, customer service. Believe that the county is served by Athens for waste, uh, we're served by Waste Management, so there would be a change in that. Uh, where? Okay, where disposal? Um, and so, yeah, there would be some changes in that, but again, that's what, uh, the local agency formation commission will be looking at overall in these areas. So, right now, we don't look to identify an area and say, hey, we're going to go after you. If an area wants to be annexed, like we have been contacted by one group, an HOA, we'll work with them. But we're going to look at that sphere of influence study with, uh, LAFCO, uh, and then start doing our outreach, start getting more questions answered from residents, finding out what their concerns are and what they want in order to join Laverne and be whole. So.
Ken, next question?
Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Um, would this in any way affect our districting?
So, there's only about 300 homes. It wouldn't, they would just be annexed into the district that's there. It's not enough registered voters to sway everything in state law, kind of like when we were debating the potential ballot measure for going to a directly elected mayor. Uh, you would have to increase your registered voters by 25% or more. Um, so, the amount of voters, amount of residents in these areas are pretty small, so there's no effect on the districts.
Ask you a question, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, was that 25% as a whole, or was it by district?
As a whole.
Got it. Yeah.
And, and I think one of the, sorry if I go, uh, pieces that, uh, Ms. Beauchamp was asking about too. When we were talking about this, the property that is just west of St. Mark's, north of Baseline, um, I know that was also brought in, the properties, all the properties that were south of Baseline. Um, that's, uh, right around 2019, 2020 at the time. Um, I remember this, uh, council chamber being full, doing a presentation, and those residents at that time were adamantly no, not wanting to do that. They are all on septic tanks, and the cost of putting themselves on city sewer system was a deterrent, uh, of that. Um, I know, uh, though, that is an island, there is Laverne on the west of them and of the east of them, um, and that, uh, that's a concern of mine, where we have, uh, all the way around, but just that one piece, we don't. Uh, though, I would have concerns of having up on top of the hill in Live Oak area, uh, where a lot of that would be in the majority of the Claremont area, there's a small portion that would be in the Laverne area, that's on top of the hill where there's only access is through the Live Oak area, or the one single road that goes up behind the St. Mark, uh, uh, there. No. And, um, concerns of our, uh, um, first responders, uh, really getting up there. I know we have an agreement with LA County Fire, and we are the first people there because of our mutual aid agreement, um, but it is a very difficult area to, to do. The area that is around Ramona should be part of Laverne. It, it really should be. The, this, right across the street of Ramona, when I worked there, um, our police, our SRO could not go to that house. It was, it was not even the San Dimas Sheriff's, it's CHP area that, that responds to, to those homes. And where those re, homes right there belong in, in Laverne, they're on the east part of the wash area. I know the wash is kind of the cutoff point between San Dimas and, and Laverne area, and I believe that, uh, that should be, they, and talking to those residents, they feel they are part of Laverne already, they have a Laverne address. Um, our, our first responders are the first ones in there.
But they don't get a ballot.
But they don't vote, and they don't, they're not, they, they feel they are Laverne, though. So, please, let's have them run. Uh, so, I, I would move, uh, you're looking for direction tonight, so I would move forward of going, um, for those pocket areas, but concerned of the Live Oak area.
I would also add to that, that, um, I agree with that also, is the fact that we're going to do this, we need to have good outreach. And if we're going to do that in the Live Oak area, or the areas south, uh, where, where Mr. Crosby's talking about, is that we discuss that with the residents of the county, because no one wants to be on a septic system, they need to be on a sewer, period. They have to be brought in. But all the other areas, um, and to Janita's point, was the fact that, um, yeah, it brings a tax base to us. It's 300 homes, it's 300 residences, it's, uh, property taxes, and it brings more residents. They already probably shop here anyway, but the point is, is there are residents now, and they're going to get better services. Might be a little more costly on certain items, but you're going to get your own police, your own fire. I mean, you can't ask for more than that. And also, the improvements we're talking about, as Mr. Henley stated, so, I'm in approval that we move forward with this.
So, can I clarify that request? So, the recommendation is to provide city staff with direction regarding the annexation of the areas, but it's, it's basically information, my understanding was that it was information gathering to determine, do these areas want to be annexed? What is the education process look like for them, so that they can make an informed decision? Um, and then what does that look like in terms of ultimate benefits and costs at the end of the day, and identifying those areas? So, I think, rather than, I think what Councilmember Crosby had stated was, let's go after the ones that make sense. I think the appropriate clarification is that the, the city council's providing direction for us to figure out what makes sense, which means the continuing education, the, the communication with those homeowners and those residents to understand what it is that they're wanting to do.
Yeah, and I under.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I understand that, because again, there's been one HOA that has reached out to us. Um, but really, I do want to make sure that, I understand I was not here during the 2019 time where that one, uh, the residential area below Baseline was talked to, heard multiple different, uh, versions of that, uh, you know, data gathering and information and all that stuff, and I want to make sure that people truly understand. So, that's why waiting, uh, and working with LAFCO, uh, working with, uh, other partners, getting that information out there for those HOAs, or some, you know, group that makes sense and wants to go forward, we can. There's rules under the state law about size issues, and if you annex something, you can't leave a pocket, so, um, that's another thing that looks into. It's a very technical process, anything dealing with the local agency formation commission, annexations, dissolutions, uh, things like that, creating new and all that stuff. And then also, uh, and there's a lot of wheeling and dealing when it comes with the county, because there will have to be a property tax exchange with the county. Um, issues such as, uh, west of Ramona, there's a, a street, I can't remember the name right now, but does not have sidewalk, whether, you know, we force the county to put sidewalk in, or whether the neighbors like it, and there is no sidewalk. Um, streetlights, like was mentioned, um, you know, one of the cities I was a city manager in had absolutely no streetlights, it only sidewalks around the school. Um, so, you know, that's a community choice, so.
Thank you, Ken. One, one last thing, Mayor, you know, I, when the first came, when I first came to the city council, something that I really wanted to do would be make, make Laverne whole. I understand, I'm talking to a lot of people that, you know, was an issue with them, that they thought that wasn't part of Laverne. And, um, and I'm understanding that there was, um, in the past, there was people that had their differences, because it was the septic tank thing. And I believe in grandfathering people into, um, giving them options, you know, having them have the ability to say, look, this is what you have, we're going to keep it that way, we're just going to make you whole. So, if there was an issue with that with the septic tanks, I understand it's, everything's so expensive now. I'm sure back in 2019, it was, for example, it was a lot less than what it would be now. And that would have a detriment to families, and, and it's tough times right now, and I don't want to make that detriment at all. But that's what I agree in, and you know, I'd like some, uh, some feedback from the community. Another, another issue is, yes, although we do respond to fire department, but the police department response is different. It is not Laverne Police Department. I know that to be true, because my neighbor in front of me is part of LA County. And so, when they had, unfortunately, I wasn't there. Um, I, I wasn't there, because I would have responded a whole lot differently, because it happened right in front of my house, uh, when they broke into their house and they smashed the window. Um, I was on active duty military at that time, so she was really visibly shaken, upset, because she came into that house and saw them there. And it took the sheriff over 20 minutes to respond. And, uh, that's a no-go in my station. So, I want to be able to have, and I know for a fact our Laverne Police Department would respond, I mean, they responded just two days ago, the street that, well, that I live on, and, uh, regarding the, the people trying to break into car doors. So, hey, keep your doors locked, they're testing you. So, that's just how I feel. Again, I do believe in grandfathering people into this, and, uh, we'd love to have a great conversation with folks, so, Laverne strong.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Cash. Uh, so basically, our, uh, just the only comment is the viability of the annexation, and make sure that we do it well. I think the last time, it wasn't quite as, um, clear-cut and clean as it should have been, so, I want to make sure we get that information out, and make sure that it's going to be viable for us to annex those areas, so.
Sorry, I have one last thing. And, uh, alibi, I will be there if you need me to go out there, knock on the doors, talk to people. An alibi, as we say in the army, I got one last thing in other words.
Okay, with that, you need a, we, we have a, we have a motion?
Motion of.
No, it said motion. Oh.
Direction.
Does I need a motion? Is there a second?
There will be items that we bring back.
I will so move that we gave direction.
Gave direction on the motion that we didn't have to take a vote on. Thank you. Okay.
I love you guys.
We have direction, that's nice. The third discussion item, the city council community forum proposal. City manager Domar, please call for the staff member who will be reporting.
Mr. Mayor, that'll be me also. So, um, this was.
I do want to make a real quick comment, that, um, this was brought up quite some time ago, and we've been a little busy with many things, but, um, Mr. Bowen, Rick Bowen, had brought it up, and I think it's a very good idea. We're just trying to figure out how we work it, um, and I know that Mr. Domar's going to talk about that. There are some modifications in here that, um, this was just a draft, and we'll discuss that, but thank you, Mr. Bowen, for that. I think it's important that we, as a council members and groups, two at a time, would meet with our residents on open forum for open discussion, uh, more than likely at our community center up here, where it's nice and open for everybody to come, at a reasonable time that people can get there. So, anyway, Mr. Domar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, this was, uh, brought forward by a resident, and then also is one of the items during the strategic planning conference, or, uh, seminar process, uh, about engaging the community better. We are looking at, uh, how to do that. This is a proposal, seeking your direction, but also understanding that, uh, it could be amended as we go forward. It's really just kind of getting to the starting gate and then going forward. Um, also, part of the issue of why only two in-person and one virtual right now? Um, we understand that sometimes it's difficult to pick a time that everybody can be at. Uh, we selected and reached out to Hillcrest, because we knew they're, in a way, a captive audience, and we talked to them about what would be the best time to interact with your residents, um, as really training for staff, and to make sure that the next time we roll something out, we're doing better. So, um, you know, the way we present, the information that we give out, um, the virtual is because we understand that we could hold something here at the community center, or we can go up to a church off Baseline, or we can go to, um, you know, a small, to Hillcrest or anywhere. And we're not going to get everybody, but the virtual opportunity allows for anybody to be in their living room, in their house, uh, across the city, and we could have a couple hundred people. So, uh, we're going to play with both concepts, uh, but, uh, understanding and hearing you from the strategic planning process, uh, we want to be able to get out there, engage the community more, and this is the first step, so, looking for direction.
Not a motion, direction. Yes, I want to open up public comment. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Mr. Bowen.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for acknowledging that I've been asking for this for quite a while. Um, LV3C was formed, uh, to do things like this, and we have done this through many years. And I came to you and said, instead of having a citizens group do it, why doesn't the city council step up and the city management step up and allow the residents to come in and have dialogue, not get the Stone Cold, um, Mount Rushmore look? and have dialogue, not get the Stone Cold, um, Mount Rushmore look and be able to ask questions and get answered? So I do appreciate you making the effort. Um, first thing, I'd like to throw in something. Uh, thanks for the PD, for the rodeo, um, jeweler, off subject, but they did a great job. Thank you, Chief. That was outstanding. And if you know Coco and the people over there, they appreciate it. And also pray for the people in Texas, over a hundred people. This is, I own a home down there. My kids live down there and they've been affected and there's people missing. And they go to church groups and this is a real, real crisis down there. Um, back to this subject. Um, Mr. Domer, I think you bastardized what we talked about. Going to, I'd like to know who approached, uh, Hillcrest and why they thought Hillcrest, of all pe, of all places in the city, at 10:00 AM on a Monday morning, would invite dialogue between citizens, getting answers. The people that I know and you attended one of the LVC three, people want, say it's evening, six, 6:30, so they get off work, they can take care of their kids. We had, we've always had lots of people, hundred people when you were there probably, and more in other situations. So to say that the first meeting would be at Hillcrest, number one, terrible location. Number two, 10 o'clock in the morning on a Monday, it almost appears like you're saying, okay, we'll do it, but it's in your face. So that's my opinion on this. I asked, you guys did agree to do it in council chambers or in the community sensor, center in the evenings? So a multitude of residents could come in and certainly Hillcrest residents. But if we're going to do this for certain populations in the city, that's not what the concept was. And I think that is just an abomination of the whole idea. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd love to hear the comments.
Any other comments on this? Public comments? Yes.
Virginia Beltran, um, I worked at Hillcrest Homes and this gentleman is correct as far as it should go directly to those homes that are directly on the home front, uh, for their comment on their home front. Uh, opposed to where the location, he's correct also on that. Um, going to Hillcrest Homes, I'm sorry, sometimes when I work there, people were usually like this, taking a nap. So perhaps at the community center where those seniors go in there, wide awake, I go there often, they're wide awake. That's a good, a better location, I would say, for this gentleman and his, you know, his neighbors to have open forum on what works for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We're going to close public comment, bring up the dais. One of the reasons why, and I, I'll just back this up, is I've done, um, the State of the City address with Hillcrest. And, uh, their timeframe is 10, 10 to about 11:30, that's about it. I mean, and so I'm not opposed to that at all if the council members have that time slot. But the basis of most of these forums is going to be at the 6 o'clock, 6:30 hour, open forum for people to come. You know, as far as residents, because people are back from work, they've had some dinner. So I, I do like the 6:30 idea, the 6:30 for, you know, hour and a half, 6:30 to 8 o'clock. It's most time for most people. And, um, I think it's a great idea. I just, we've been extremely busy with budgets and things like that, no excuse. But it's, uh, I've been to many of the forums, LVC three, they've been very good. But, um, I mean, we've got plenty of places to hold those. So I'm not opposed to the community center. We've got to watch our staff times and stuff like that.
Absolutely. And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, and to Mr. Bowen's comment, um, yes, we, we look to move this around. Um, during my comments, and Mr. Bowen may have been making notes or something, but, um, you know, I talked about the ability to move around. We reached out under my authority to Hillcrest to do the first one. Um, I'm sorry that is not to his satisfaction, but again, we want to bring this to different communities, different areas, uh, to the mobile home parks. We want to accommodate people who may not be able to get here at a certain time, um, for whatever reason, to the community center or to another location. So we do look to move it around. And again, if anybody, Mr. Bowen invited me to the LV3C, uh, I attended. Um, believe there's going to be another one that featured, uh, the police chief. I'm not sure if that has happened. Um, but if a community group reaches out to us here through the city manager, we will go to a smaller HOA. We will go to, you know, any event. We need to engage more and we've never said no. Um, this is going to be more of a formal approach. And what I've been working with staff on is like a, a speakers bureau concept. So the issue of the strategic planning process, the budget, putting all this information in, so to inform our residents as to the direction that the city's going, we've done a huge effort to try to engage and to inform about the budget process here. We've started with staff because several years ago, the budget process was not spread amongst the staff. Um, there is a big need to make sure that our residents understand how we're using their funding sources because there's going to be decisions in the future based on our projected revenue streams and increasing expenditures about services and programs. And one of the things that I'm very cognizant about is, especially on this first one, is making sure that I can't have staff here all the time after hours. So yeah, I want to see how this goes and see how it works out. Reaching out to Hillcrest and you're absolutely right. We ask them, what time works best for you? So that's why we're there, Mr. Bowen, at Hillcrest at 10:00 AM on a Monday. And we'll be at the community center or at a church at 6:30 or 7:00 if that's what works for everybody else. So.
So my only comment is just to say thank you, um, for taking into consideration the different times and locations and the Zoom option. Um, because I think to Mr. Bowen's point, I think we have a lot of parents that, um, would want to come to a city council meeting, but they're putting kids to bed. They're not going to leave their kids alone. They're not going to be able to find, um, you know, um, childcare. So if they could participate via Zoom, that's a great option too. Um, but like you said, I appreciate looking at different locations throughout the city. I think the mobile home parks is one too. We do have a population there that isn't always going to be able to get here. Um, so if we can go to them, then I hope that we can communicate, communicate better with all our different constituencies. So, um, I think maybe drawing up a list of places and times that varies for different people because I think we have to understand that, um, not everybody works nine to five, not everybody works close to home. Nope, everybody works in an office. Um, we're not going to get everybody, but if we are being as inclusive and welcoming as possible, that would be appreciated.
And I know the, the mayor and I have been, we're the, we're the, part of the mobile home parks liaisons. We've been at Foothill Terrace, um, numerous times, um, and then off Bradford a, as well. Um, and every time they've asked, um, or they, they've asked the police to go or the fire department to go, um, and talk about, uh, things, I think our last topic was, was really how to make sure that people were not approaching our elderly, um, uh, residents and asking for things, what they can do to make sure to keep themselves safe. And our police did a very good interactive, um, uh, purpose there. But we, um, the mayor and I have also attended those. But, um, going out to see larger groups, I know, um, LVC three, um, trying to look fine for a larger group rather than the, the isolated groups of the specific areas. But, uh, we have been open and gone to, to many of those events. Um, and usually those events happen, um, hot dog dinners.
It's always food involved. Very generous with food. Mr. Johnson.
I think it's a great idea. Um, and I have no problem going to Hillcrest Homes. Um, it's a friendly and generally, uh, a large audience there that, um, comes to see us. Um, I would be interested to see how, um, it, how the attendance is at, at other locations. Um, I know the mobile home parks are kind of a captive audience, just like Hillcrest is. Um, how many people would come up to the community center for such an event? I don't know. Um, but it'd be interesting to find out.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Cash.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just echoing my colleagues' comments. So I would take it another step. I would have it like at least in my district. So the folks that can't make it down South End, that can't make it down to obviously the amazing captive audience, whether in Hillcrest, the mobile home park, that's kind of, that's there in closer proximity. Uh, I wouldn't mind having it opposed to having it like at a park as long as it's not an hour rain, right? We have opportunity there. We got benches. We can sit down. We can have a, hopefully a decent conversation. Uh, my backyard is always welcoming, man. My backyard is always welcoming. Um, my home is always welcoming. This is how I roll. But, uh, having it at least by, maybe by district or an area so I can at least capture some, some of the folks in my area. You know, I, I don't think the coast, well, I guess Laverne Heights maybe. Uh, but you know, talking maybe to the Benignify School District and seeing if we can use Laverne Heights. The, the fire station, there you go. I'm sorry. Yeah, you know, perfect. Uh, Fire Station Three in the back, Jim. Yeah, whatever. So, thank you.
Um, I think it's a great idea, but I do, I don't want to leave anyone out. I think Hillcrest is a very, very good, uh, uh, it's, it's early, but yet the residents, uh, some of them aren't as mobile, but most of them are. Um, but, um, I look forward to, uh, multiple events. I have no issues with it. As Mr. Crosby said, we've done enough of these, a bunch. And, um, I'm always up for a good question. And we will probably, we'll make sure that we keep our staff to an extreme minimum. We can probably coordinate this ourselves and take care of it with some help. So. Uh, with that, I think you have, uh, your, your direction to move ahead with that. So we're not going to vote. Thank you. The next one is the fourth discussion item, the gateway signage enhancement for the pedestrian bridge project. City Manager Domer, please call for the staff member. I think that would be Mr.
I'm going to call for Cody Howling, our city engineer, who loves these items.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Yes, I do love these items. Um, before us tonight is, um, to some extent, a continuation of discussion we held on April 21st of 2025 regarding architectural enhancements of the pedestrian bridge. Um, just for the benefit of, uh, the audience, uh, the pedestrian bridge is a proposed project that is currently, uh, nearing the end of the engineering phase. And what it will provide is a, a, uh, safe and, um, convenient connection between the Gold Line State, or sorry, the A-line station formerly known as Gold Line, uh, and the Fairplex, uh, campus. So, uh, at our last, uh, last discussion on this, we talked about architectural, uh, features. Uh, one of those subjects was signage. Um, so I'm here bringing that back to council for discussion and consideration. The recommendation tonight is, uh, for council to provide direction on preferences for signage. So, um, we'll jump straight to the point. Uh, we have two options that we've kind of looked at, digested and brought back more information. The first option or option A is before you right now on the screen. Um, that option is a, uh, channelized aluminum sign system, uh, somewhat of a conventional system. You might see it, you know, on storefronts or in other places. Uh, as we scale it out on these images that are clicking back and forth, um, it's roughly about a six foot tall, uh, lettering. Uh, and that would be, as it's proposed, at least in the budget right now, the numbers that are provided in the staff report, is internally illuminated, uh, which is some of the things that we had discussed the last time around. Yes. So, thank you. So, uh, that's option A. Um, well, uh, you know, and the colors, I'll touch on the colors briefly. Um, it's shown in a, I'll call it a champagne color that kind of mimics or matches the gateway sign that's over, uh, East Street, uh, that's still under construction with the Gold Line, uh, Authority Project. Um, other colors that might enhance or look nice, you know, the green, uh, and always any other items or ideas that might be out there. Um, as far as the messaging goes, and I'll jump right into this, uh, since we have on the screen, it says, welcome to Laverne. The rendering before you is looking west. So it's westbound traffic. Um, say you just turned right or left off a white and you're heading west, uh, on Arrow. That would be the, the, uh, the line of sight that you see. Welcome to Laverne is an idea that's out there. Now, the one challenge with welcome to Laverne is on the opposing side, uh, welcome to Laverne probably doesn't, um, mesh as well with your positioning as you've been in Laverne for quite a while, heading eastbound on Arrow, uh, and you're, um, probably closer to departing Laverne than you are entering. So, um, uh, next photo for me, JR, thank you. Uh, Laverne is a standard. Uh, this is looking, uh, to the east. So this is, that would, that would be the eastbound, you know, almost departing the city boundaries or at least closer to, uh, that's an option. Uh, one of the other options that was thrown out there and probably makes sense if you can move forward, JR, to the next one. Um, on the option B, you can kind of see, uh, the scaling is a little bit, um, more muted in the sense that we are, uh, proposing this option B to be cast into the bridge. Um, it's a, obviously a much more cost-effective option. Um, but, uh, filling out that space does present, um, maybe a little bit more process to think of what might make sense there. So again, we're looking at welcome to Laverne. It could say City of Laverne, Laverne. We could add the, uh, date of incorporation or the year of incorporation in there or any other ideas that council might, um, put forth as, as something to consider. So, so one thing, one thing that I'll, I will, uh, add to this, um, is obviously cost, cost upfront. Um, the project is estimated right now to be approximately $26 million and change. We have identified approximately $26 million and change. Um, in that estimate, we have, uh, some contingencies. Um, you know, uh, as con, uh, construction costs, inflation and so on affect the budget. There has been also an additional $2 million that has not been factored in that 26 that, um, we have worked and partnered with the COG and the COG has identified the City of Laverne for, uh, use of that money. Now, in that scope that we're allowed to use that $2 million, this bridge is allowed. It wasn't necessarily the original intent, but, uh, it fits the multimodal needs and the benefit for the station. And so it very well may become part of the bridge. Flexibility, yes.
I want to reiterate that, um, you know, $26 million is a lot. It is not city money. There's a small portion from the EIFD, but the majority of it is CAG grants, federal grants, state grants. Um, all worked through the San Gabriel Valley COG, so.
Yes, uh, many of those dollars are restricted funds from those grant sources. Yes, absolutely. So, uh, one last thing that I'll touch base and leave, uh, with council is, uh, while there's, obviously there's an upfront cost as part of the project, there's also an ongoing maintenance cost. So the internally illuminated sign while, um, you know, may present a little bit more visible at night, um, or much more visible at night, um, also comes with a number of costs in terms of maintenance. Uh, they will have LED light diodes in there, uh, but those do not last forever. Um, the general consensus from what I understand is you would hope to get somewhere between five and 10 years. Uh, at least that's what they're rated. But every implementation may be subject to, um, environmental conditions. So overheating on a sign, um, the dust, debris, you know, all that type of stuff that, that they, it could expose in the outside. Um, changing the light bulbs on this particular fixture would not come without challenge. Uh, it would involve probably road closures, uh, lane closures. Uh, but to add to the fun is because of the proximity of the railroad tracks, you know, one of the obvious benefits of putting the bridge up and over the road tracks is it would involve coordinating with the, um, the railroad and, um, that generally does not come certainly quick or without cost. So, um, with that, I, uh, will conclude my report and I'm available for any questions of council.
Okay, so, um, those are inset concrete, correct? Those are cut, those in that new cast?
Yep, yep.
Now, if we were to make them longer and bigger, but we would have the lighting, you see the edge right there? The concrete edge and then you've got the fence support? I mean, why couldn't we just do spotlights there at a, at an area where they angle off of that, that, that natural, like that?
Are you talking about the column support?
Yeah, well, you've got the Laverne, okay? So we want to, we want to light that up.
Yeah.
There's enough intensity of these lights now where you could take them in an area where they're accessible, coming off of that design thing. Yeah, and just have them boom on the line. Now, I think Mr. Crosby would like the Laverne sign to be three times the size of that in cast in concrete. Is that correct, Mr. Crosby?
Actually, um, I'm probably a minority on this one, that my vision on this is you, if you go out towards Palm Springs or go out toward Riverside, you see a lot of overpasses that have the city names. It really brings about pride of that city and where they're going through there too. Um, where it's just on concrete on the, the smaller end, it looks like the San Dimas sign in San Dimas is overpassing of the bridge right now for the A, A-line, which does not look dynamic. Doesn't, it looks, um, boring and, uh, plain. Where if you have the option A, where you flick to it, um, piece where that is. Where if you have the Option A, where you flick to it, piece, where that is, it stands out. Yes, there's a cost, but this is a one-time that it's going, going to be going up. And that where we want to make sure Laverne is really presented and proud. If you just go to, what's it, C Street, right there where it says, the Old Town Laverne? They're very similar block letters like those are there, too. And so it really brings cohesiveness to as well. Remember, I spoke in the May meeting as well about, you know, if we're going to do this here, we could also look at the 210 freeway to try to bring a piece where Laverne. I don't believe the Welcome to, I think it's only we need is Laverne on both sides, because that's who we are. And really just show and highlight it. So my proposal really is going back to the Option A where it really stands out. And, yeah, but just Laverne, not Welcome to. So it really is dynamic, and the lighting on there, it really shows and looks out there of what we are. It is a cost on it.
Not as much, we only go Laverne, though.
But as big as we can get it. So if there's less letters, the bigger letters they can be, too. Just so.
You're going to kill our council member. While we're, while we're still, we should probably go to public comment.
My opinion, there you go.
Okay, let's open up public comment on this item. Oh, Danita was first, Bill, you're second? I'm going to go with you.
Danita Bochamp, 2516 Amherst. I'm going to agree with my district rep. Thank you very much, Mr. Crosby. If you've gone out to Palm Desert, you see the letters are not just the size of what is here. They are the entire size of the fence. And even though they curve over to prevent people jumping off, and it says Desert Hot Springs, Cathedral City, Palm Des, whatever, La Quinta. And I go out there frequently to play softball, and so it's nice to see that. And especially for some people, you know, it's kind of BFE out there. So it's nice to know, hey, I know where I'm at, you know? I mean, it's not just get off at Agua Caliente, the casino, you know?
Is this after alcohol or before alcohol?
Because, you know, it's just windmills that don't work and dead weeds. I mean, you don't really know where you are. It's nice to drive through there and say, I'm in Laverne. And since our cost is minimal on the, you know, the building of the bridge to begin with, yes, we're facing budgetary issues, but I agree, this is a one-time issue. I think it's great, and I think it's something that needs to be done. Imagine the planes coming into Brackett and see it, how cool is that?
Thank you, Mr. Bochamp, Bill.
Excuse me, how about an LED light that says Laverne? And you can actually put it in the middle on a pole, like they have a car dealership.
I think you've already been shot down, Bill.
Probably.
We want Laverne, so we know where we're going when we get home, we say Laverne, we know we're close to home.
And you can always right turn it to a casino at Cash's place. Because he's got the yard, right?
LED lights.
Everybody's welcome all the time.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any other comments? Hey, we're getting in the late hour, so we're going to cut it short.
And I'm hungry, too. We don't need to say Welcome, Laverne, and no pun intended. If we're not welcome to come into Laverne, we're saying you're not welcome. But anyways, I see that, like, some of the, some of our artists, students at the university, like people who made our walls, our memorial walls, they get into a contest. We get the contest a little prize, a little prize, $5,000, $10,000, $1,000, something to help them in their education. Anyways, get a contest to put what you'd like to see, but Laverne behind you? That is perfect, that's why it's here in the city council, in God we trust. That's perfect. There's a building over there with oranges and with lemons, because that's what Laverne represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment, yes?
Said it's a one-time fee, I don't believe it's a one-time fee. Can you put it back up? The city sign, the Laverne sign? He said about changing the light bulbs every five to eight years, I think he said? And you have to contract with the railroad. Those track supervisors there, they cost a lot of money. You have to contract with the railroad to change light bulbs out on the sign. It's, it's, those guys call, yeah, they, that costs a lot of money. They, all they do is call Form Bs for trains to make sure it's safe for whoever's going to change the light bulbs out, city workers. So it's not a one-time fee, so just to let you know, you will be paying on the sign for years to come.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We're going to close public comment. We're going to bring out the deus. So you like the Laverne lit sign? Do we need it bigger on each side? How big do you want it? Cody, help us out here.
So the signs, as they're displayed on the rendering, or the letters, sorry, rather, are six-foot tall. They're in. If scale is something that council is also interested, I know we, the last time around, discussed possibly using the screening as a material.
No.
And that's why we didn't bring it back, it wasn't welcome.
So basically, the Laverne sign would be, those letters are actually six-foot tall, is that correct?
The letters that you're seeing right now on the screen are roughly two and a half foot tall, because they have to fit within, on the aluminum channelized letter, those are the six-foot tall.
So we would do those, but they would be LED, they would not be neon, they would be LED.
They would be LED, not neon.
When, where are the light bulbs positioned?
They'd be situated behind, well, within the channelized letters, and there's typically an opaque plexiglass or, yeah, some sort of material that can let the light through.
You would see that from a countrymark.
It would be quite visible, yes.
I mean, I agree with Councilmember Crosby that it would be nicer. I also agree that it would be an ongoing cost, so I would be interested to know what that cost would be. Just so that we're all going in with eyes wide open about what that looks like. Because when you mentioned having to coordinate with the railroads, I know that there's insurance that has to go with that, too. Whoever has to work on it, you have to procure specific insurance to work by a railroad. So, you know, if we're looking at, you know, once every five to 10 years, we got to change some bulbs? That's not horrible. But I would be interested in knowing what that is. But I am, I get what you're saying. I'm fine with a, I'm fine with the six-foot letters.
So we would go Laverne, we would scoot it in the middle?
Yeah, into the middle.
Put it in the middle, correct? We don't want it Welcome to.
No, just Laverne. Less bulbs to change.
So we could shift it to the middle.
LEDs, they're not bulbs anymore. So.
No, yeah, so we could shift it to the middle, but that would affect that sweeping design element there. So we would have to, with the designers.
But the sweeping element is on the top.
Oh, I see, you want to move it up?
No, just move it, Laverne just this way. Move it this way.
Okay, so just Laverne.
Leave it where it is, just move Laverne and take Welcome to out of there.
Understood.
The middle of the segment, yeah. And then you would have one on each side, correct?
Yes.
One on each side of that bridge.
Yes, one for the eastbound approaching traffic and one for the westbound approaching.
So I mean, if that sign up there was 128 grand, was that what you were talking about?
I believe it was $101,000.
So basically, it'd be cut in half because we're using basically almost less than half the letters?
The 101, I believe, is more on the City of Laverne option, so it may not be as good of a discount, but yes, there would be some savings.
So basically, Laverne sign, Mr. Johnson, where are you?
Waiting to sign in.
What do you, what do you think? You like Laverne lit?
I like just Laverne on the sign. I don't think we need Welcome to, because that's a given. Now, is this going to be in both directions? Another concern I have, it doesn't have to do with the sign, but the street itself. I've been noticing water coming up from under where the bridge is being located. And I know that there is a metropolitan feeder line that goes in that general vicinity as well that I'm concerned about.
Oh, duly noted. But you like the Laverne sign, just Laverne, correct?
Just Laverne.
Thank you. Councilmember Cash?
Oh, I was going to say, like, green or orange? I love it. Laverne, that'll look like yellow. I don't know. Great, if you can go, I'm all for it, man, 100%, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Got you, Chad, I'm Chad.
Can we change the colors?
Oh, yeah.
I know it's usually an option, but it's the drivers.
Like for Christmas or Thanksgiving.
Let's just go with, just go with the white color, okay?
So if changing the colors was the interest of council, additional equipment and maintenance would be involved in that. So just the standard white.
Okay, so.
Would be the simplest option available.
So, right now, we want to go with, the motion would be to approve Laverne lit sign, center of the bridge. And we'd go with that, is that, that's the motion, that's the motion on the front. Do I, have I, do I have, do you want to do the motion?
Yeah, thank you, you cut me off, I couldn't finish.
I know.
That's okay. A motion approved.
Just hurry up, we're running out of time. Okay, no, no, motion, what's the motion?
For Laverne only.
Laverne only, okay, go ahead. Okay, so the motion is, Mr. Crosby, Laverne only lit sign, both sides. Do I have a second? Do I have a motion, you have the motion, do I have a second? Mr. Crosby already did the motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Now, what color?
No, we're going to go with straight color, white, white, white.
Just white, okay, that I, that I approve.
Okay. Well, we're so glad.
On motion by Councilmember Crosby, seconded by Mayor Protem Cash-Vagito. Councilmember Crosby?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lau?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cash-Vagito?
Yes.
Mayor Hepburn?
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
And though I know we've been looking, sorry, I know that's not part of this item, though we've also looking for the 210, what that would be, thank you.
Thank you.
Next discussion item, the authorization to hire a retired annuitant as a range master for oversight of firing range use by an outside agency. City Manager Domer, please call for the person to speak on this issue.
And Mr. Mayor, this item, Count Mayor Protem Cash-Vagito needs, nope, nope, okay.
No, they're fine.
Never mind, the city attorney is good with that.
No, we're just lying to you.
Assistant City Manager JR Renells will provide this update.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Ken. LA County Probation Department has requested to utilize the city's firing range for an agreed-upon fee. The city does not have staff capacity to ensure safe operations during the requested use, but has identified retired Sergeant Martin Weinrib, who possesses the training and experience to provide this service. The recommended action is requested to comply with the California Public Employees Retirement System regulations related to such retired annuitant appointments. For the fiscal analysis, the retired annuitant will be compensated at an hourly rate, basically commensurate with their prior classification, and not exceeding the hourly rate paid to employees performing similar duties. The cost is expected to be offset by fees paid by the external agency using the range and no impact to the general fund as anticipated. The recommendation is that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to appoint a retired annuitant pursuant to Government Code Section 21224 under the California Public Employees Retirement System to temporarily serve as a range master for oversight of the city's firing range during use by an external law enforcement agency. And then I'll just also add, we made sure this was actually on the agenda about a month or so ago, and we went back and got in writing from PERS that the way that we were doing it was in compliance.
And that means absolutely nothing with PERS, thank you, have a nice day. Councilmember.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Really?
Wait, Steve, we haven't gotten to public comment yet. Hey.
I know, I know, I'm with you, hold on. Just really quick on, it's my one, page 139, Chief Gonzalez's name is spelled wrong, so if we can just make sure that's corrected, please.
I knew it. With that, we're going to open up public comment.
I'm looking out for Sam.
Danita? We're on short time, thank you for your comments.
I know it's late, but you should put the important stuff up front. There are serious public safety concerns. The probation department is currently under scrutiny for systemic failures, including mismanagement of violent juvenile offenders, inadequate staff training and supervision, lapses in ensuring safety during field activities. These are the reasons what led LA County Supervisor's removal of lethal action. They are no longer allowed to use pepper spray. The city and the county is faced backlash for proposed probation-related activities such as attempts to house a 707B 404 SYTF violent juvenile offenders near residential and school zones. Many residents feel betrayed by the secretive or rushed agreements involving outside agencies.
Danita, which one are you talking about? This is about our range, our range master?
Yeah.
Oh, you're going that way, okay.
Yeah, probation depart, LA County Probation Department, this is, these are the things that they have done or been doing. Granting range access may be seen as a cooperation or an endorsement of county probation programs that the public has strongly opposed. Many residents feel betrayed by secretive or rushed agreements involving outside agencies simply by the number of times the LA County probation director has changed in the short period of time that they have been dealing with the housing situation at Los Pedrinos. Liability and legal risk. If an incident were to occur involving county personnel, an accidental discharge, injury, or property damage, the city may be held legally or financially responsible depending on how the agreement is written. The agreement may require costly legal reviews, insurance modifications, or indemnification clauses that ultimately burden city taxpayers. Incompatibility with city values. Our city has worked hard to maintain a community-first approach to public safety rooted in transparency, thankfully to Chief Gonzalez. Localized training and community involvement. Partnering with an agency that is currently under state investigation for neglect and mismanagement directly contradicts that philosophy. Lack of mutual benefit. There is nor, there is no clear long-term benefit to the city other than the modest usage fee. This short-term financial gain does not outweigh the potential long-term reputational and operational risks. The city's firing range should remain reserved for local police use, officer training, or coordinated inter-agency training under strict agreements, not general rentals. This is a form of double-dipping and questionable use of city funds. The city proposes hiring a retired employee, referred to as annuitant, to oversee the range usage by the probation department. This raises serious concerns that double-dipping as the annuitant would be collecting a public pension while receiving additional taxpayer-funded compensation for oversight duties. Using public funds in this way may not only appear unethical, but also could violate fiscal stewardship standards expected by the city residents. Hiring retirees for paid part-time roles to supervise controversial outside agency use is an inefficient and potentially exploitive use of city resources. In conclusion, providing firearms training support to an agency with such poor track record could present serious liability risk and raises questions about accountability if something goes wrong during the range usage. City of Laverne and City of Laverne Police Department is already an easy target. Clearly, by the enormity of the pending lawsuits, this activity will only open the door for even more potential litigation. The city should deny the probation department's request to utilize a firing range. This issue goes beyond the simple facilities agreement. It touches on broader concerns of public trust, safety, and responsible governance. City resources should be used to support local needs, not to prop up failing county systems that have consistently ignored the concerns of impacted communities.
Thank you, Danita. Yes?
Virginia Beltran, once again, working in corrections. We used our own facilities, facilities like the prisons that we worked at to use our, to regain every yearly, you know, mandated recertifications. We used our facilities, we used our employees because they're the best people to do the job. Whether they're retired or not is here or there. Because they're retired, obviously, they worked many years in that field. They are the ones I trust who work over 20 years and retire as that type of person and that type of profession. I feel safe and confident that they are the ones that should be coming out of retirement to give us a show and a better budget-friendly approach to how it should be done, the way they did it when they were employed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We're going to close public comment.
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify?
Yes, please.
What is before you is the ability to use Officer Weinrab as a retired annuitant for the, you know, for less than the maximum number of hours. That'll be fully reimbursed. That is the only item before you, not the agreement with the probation department.
We have no agreement with the probation department or anyone, it's just an annuitant to serve as a range master, period. It's just an annuitent to serve as a range master, period.
For that particular contract, we contract with other agencies to use our range. This is not the first and only one.
Thank you. Counsel. Public comment closed.
Hiring an annuitent is, instead of having our own department by doing it, it just, it relieves our, our, our own police to not pull them from, from something else. Although, if they, I always say, we hire our own employees. If they have time or they were willing to do that, I would hire our own employees that are active. But if there's not, then hiring a former employee is the next best, next best thing.
Mr. Johnson.
No problem with Mr. Weinrab being the range master. I'm not aware of any issues associated with the group that's gonna be using it. That would be more clarification would, would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mayor Protem Cash.
No, no comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Buenoau.
Since we're just voting on the annuitent, I will, I guess, refrain from commenting on the contract itself then, which is in the package materials.
That's it? Oh. Yeah, basically, I think Officer Weinrab will be a great job. And I think that as far as the other issues, Mr. Johnson said, that's for point of clarification later on with the chief and with the city manager. We can discuss that later, but right now it's for the range master, and I do agree with it. I just need a motion to approve.
I move to approve hiring an annuitent, which is Mr. Weinrab at this time, to be range master.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Obstinate.
What do you say?
Councilmember Lau?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cash Vagita?
Yes.
Mayor Hepburn?
Yes.
That was approved, four zero, with Councilmember Johnson abstaining.
Thank you. We know the last two items will be presented at the same time, but we'll take two distinct votes on the matters as they deal with employee compensation. Assistant City Manager Rennels, would you please lead these two items?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with 13 specifically. The city is proposing to do cost-of-living salary adjustments reflecting a 2% increase for unrepresented employees that fall under the middle management and executive management groups. The city is still in negotiations with the City Employees Association, the Laverne Police Officers Association, and Laverne Police Middle Management Group. Once negotiations conclude with these groups, it's anticipated that additional actions will be brought back to council, including possible other salary chart adjustments. And then specifically for the part-time chart, charts, because a lot of the part-time positions are benchmarked to full-time positions that fall under the City Employees Association. A 2% increase for unrepresented employees in these groups will require $165,000, $165,051 increase to the fiscal year 2526 adopted budget distributed across multiple funds. That's specifically called out in the agenda report. The general, the general fund increase of $128,164 will be supported by a transfer from the Measure LV Fund, consistent with Tier One uses under Measure LV spending guidelines. This funding aligns with the recommendations from the Measure LV Oversight Committee at its April 29, 2025 meeting, where the committee endorsed Tier One spending based on the negotiated contracts approved by the city council. And so the recommendation for that one, I'll come back to. And then going back to item 14, or to item 14. This is the actual benefit resolutions for the middle management group and the executive management group. That's tied very closely to the adjustments that are being requested in the salary charts. Most of the language in those agreements are not being changed. We did provide redline copies in the agenda report. Some of the changes were related to the Parks and Recreation Department changes that were taking place and that we celebrated earlier this evening. And then there's additional language that talks about the 2% salary increase that would be effective with the first full pay period in July. The recommendation for the first item, 13, on the agenda, is that the city council adopt the attached resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laverne, California, Adopting a Salary Chart for Full-Time Employees and Repealing Resolution Number 2445." The recommendation for item 4, well, let's go ahead and probably... Right.
Yeah, I asked these questions earlier today, but I just want to make sure, being transparent, to make sure that the public knows questions that I've asked previously there, too. That with the, this 2%, because we were talking about our budget last month and having a structural deficit and, but operationally balanced, that this, because of the funds coming from the Measure LV Fund going into the general fund, it is not making the general fund even more of a deficit. Right?
Correct.
So I just want to make sure. And then that also spoke about the last meeting, the meeting before, was that there was a middle management in the fire department that was looking to be unionized, but they are still part of this group right now. So they are in, called out to be in this piece as well.
Correct, yes, because they have not finalized that process, and that has not negotiated a whole different agreement. So they're still part of this unit.
I just wanted to make sure and bring up topics that we've been discussing for the last couple of months that, that this, this topic here has in it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Councilmember Johnson, any comments?
No comments.
Councilmember Lau, no. No, I, actually, Councilmember Crosby, it's the same questions I asked, just to make sure that it doesn't hit our bottom line. It was approved by the Measure LV, and these other ones are from the different funds. So with that, we're gonna take a motion on the one or the two? Number 13. Do I take a motion for number 13?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Lau?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cash Vagita?
Yes.
And Mayor Hepburn?
Yes. Item number 14, J.R.
And that item was approved five oh, I think, is what.
Yes, that item was approved, five zero. Motion by Cash.
The recommendation for item 14 is that the city council adopt the attached resolutions establishing benefits for executive management and middle management professional and confidential employees and repeal Resolution Number 2353 and Number 2354 respectively.
You know, public comment on this item? Any wish to speak on that? Any no public comment? We'll close public comment, bringing up the dais. Any comments, Mr. Crosby?
No, just as long as we open public comments for that item, too.
I got you, yeah. Any comments from council? Mr. Johnson, any comments?
No comment.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, item number 14.
And we got it. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lau?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cash Vagita?
Yes.
Mayor Hepburn?
Yes.
That item was approved, five zero. Motion by Cash, second, Cash Vagita, seconded by Councilmember Lau.
Very good. There's no other business tonight, so we move on to public comments. Is the time set aside for anyone wishing to address the city council on items not listed on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdictions? The city council, Brown Act prohibits the city council from engaging in discussion on any item not on the posted agenda. Your concerns may refer to staff or place for discussion. I'll let you date. There's a three-minute or whatever. At this time, if you wish to speak, come to the podium. Yeah, it's the punchy time. That would be that no one's coming up for public comment. I'm just looking at you. No, okay. We're gonna close public comment. Oh, well, you didn't raise your hand. Oh. Ms. Beauchamp. Ms. Beauchamp. That's your bedtime, girl.
I'm dying. I have a second-degree sunburn right now. I want to take a moment to thank Officer Mark Gutierrez and all of Laverne Police Department for being integral in that rodeo jewelry heist, attempted heist, and they caught the majority of the suspects. And thank you to the police department and whoever's doing that on social media. And they're just putting it out there so that people know what's going on and what the police are doing within their legal realms. Because I know certain, when things are in investigation, they can't really talk about it. But that was really, that was really good. And I think a lot of the residents felt safe knowing that they're out there doing their job. So thank you for that. Rick kind of stole my thunder, so I'll keep it short. But I just, I just want to say, God, grant the mercy to the families that are dealing with these floods and to those young children, those girls at the summer camp. I don't even have kids of my own, and it got to me, like, to know that these kids just got swept away by that. And Rick shared with me that the flood is not far from his own home in, in Texas. I mean, another 20 feet and it'll probably affect his property, so. But on a serious note, and I know it's late and we're tired and, you know, it's a long weekend and, you know, we all had fun. We want to go home now. But it's really annoying. Annoying is probably not even a strong enough word, but it's disheartening that we take time out of our schedules to be here to listen to what is important to the residents, is on the agenda, and you're not giving the respect and attention to your presenters. I listen to what Cody says. You know that because of the questions that I ask of him. And you guys are joking around and talking, and it was extremely difficult for me to hear what he is presenting. And it, and he's not the only one. There are other people that you do that, too. And so I feel that's a disrespect to us residents who attend these meetings because we are here because we want to hear what's being said. And so, you know, you guys, once you're behind closed doors, joke all you want, whatever. But it's, it's important to me. I don't know about anybody else, but I ask that you please be respectful for your presenters. They do a lot of hard work. They put a lot of time and effort into it. And that's just something that I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beauchamp. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. Bringing up the dais. Mr. Crosby.
Thank you, Ms. Beauchamp, for that duly noted. You know what? Short and sweet. I know we, the, everyone that worked for the Fourth of July event. I was on Saturday listing every single name, and it was so much and so many people. Just appreciate everyone that worked there. And everybody just giving up time to do that. I had the pleasure. I was not on the city council float. I was on the Autism Spectrum Athletics float. My wife is a board member for Autism Spectrum Athletics, and they won the youth sports award for their float. And just the amazing things. And someone said earlier today that around 10,000 was the number. There are so many people out at that parade, and it hits so many people that come to our city to see our parade. And it's just, it just brings the community together. So thank you, all those involved. Thank you for all the people that are in the parade and making the floats and just celebrating our country and being together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Councilmember Lau?
So I wanted to echo Councilmember Crosby's comments about the Fourth of July because I get to sit on the Friends of the Fourth of July Committee, which meets, I want to say, eight times out of the year, which seems like, wow, you meet eight times. Yes. As do many of our staff, including police, fire, public works, facilities. All these people get together each month in order to make sure that there's a successful parade, that there is a successful fireworks show. There's a lot of coordination with community members, the Boy Scouts who put on the pancake breakfast, the Methodist Church who puts on the island barbecue. If you had island barbecue this year. And the coordination with the Harley rides. I have to give it up to Tim Morrison for hurting that one, because this was the first year that we did registrations and a much more organized process coordinated with the police department to ensure the safety of not only the folks riding the Harleys, but our audience members because of the incident that happened last year. So, you know, sometimes people say, why do we have all these rules? And it's because we want to make sure that the event continues to happen in a way that's safe for everybody. And that wouldn't happen if we didn't have all of these people participating. And so many of them are community members. If you know Ashley Fernandez or Jamie Jivliano, who both have kids in Little League and are known about town. They signed up to be our sponsorship coordinators this year. And if it wasn't for their diligence in tracking down funds to pay for the fireworks, we wouldn't have had the fireworks. So I just really, if you see these folks around town and if you see their names about, if you see our public works, our police, our fire out there, they go a long way to making this day happen, and it's a very long day for our staff. So thank you so much for, for doing that, and thank you so much for making it a fun day for so many people.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Councilmember Johnson?
I just want to have a shout-out to the police department for working with additional agencies and securing the rodeo jewelers. I think that was a big win for the city of Laverne. And a reminder that fire season is with us all year long. And a shout-out to the fire department and those that are away assigned on the current fires that are being fought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mayor Protem Cash Vagita?
So I go, and Steve's talking about, with all the amazing firefighters, have the opportunity for them to, on the Fourth of July, to really be the grand marshals. And, you know, don't forget the sacrifices and the time that they spent out there battling these year-round. No more fire season. It's year-round. So a good opportunity to see that and be part of an amazing float of a great city that brings the whole community together. And that was really good to see. And, you know, please don't forget, we have, again, switching gears, the concert's at the park. Come on down. The concert's at the park. Great bands that are, they're out playing during the summertime. I love to see a full park that's there and have a lot of many people there. And then every time I, last time I went, everybody was asking about you, Tim. They're like, where's Tim? I'm like, God, I can never get anything right. Anyways, love you, Tim.
Cody, apologies on our jubilation over here, but there's one person that's extremely excited about the bridge. I know you are, too, but the funding was not easy to get, and I think as a team, we worked great, but we're just a little giddy about the lighting. But I just want to see that bridge get built, so apologies if we were a little on the punchy side. But we're excited. I think that's gonna be an amazing addition to us. Plus, when it plops on the other side of the Fairplex, we're gonna have some great stuff going on there, too. So this is just the beginning of many, many things for our community. But apologies. You had a great presentation, and you were just giddy about lighting. Sorry about that. Number one, again, it was a fantastic parade. Everything went without a hitch. Thank you to all the departments that did that. Kudos to the police department and our FSET crew and all of our people that were in the rodeo jewelers. That was amazing. We will, that is something that's so major for so many areas that that affected. And also, kudos to Spectrum, who, this whole ordeal, the fiber was cut in not just three, but I think four or five places. Spectrum was up and running probably within 24 to 48 hours. We had to get, kudos to John Harbittian, our assembly member, because I was so frustrated, and I was talking to Ken, and it's like, they couldn't, there's people out of internet for four, three to four days. And Harbittian got us the number for the general manager. General manager was in complete communication. Once Ken had left, he was in communication with me, communication directly to the customers, and they got them back online, but they kept finding more cuts and more cuts. So whatever these people... So whatever these people did, they knew exactly what they were doing, so kudos to you guys. We got it up and running. We'll have to have a conversation with Frontier, because they still service a number of customers, and there were still about a, I think it was about a hundred and twenty customers, but the general manager, Doug, over at, was very receptive, and he did a, he did a really good job. Again, our hearts and prayers out to Texas. I don't know how in the world this happened, but it did. Mother Nature is mean, and it came on them. They had no clue what was going on, but the stories you're hearing about the kids that were at the camp is just incredible. Children pulling children out to save their lives. I mean, jeez. And it's twenty, what was it, twenty-two feet in a matter of a half an hour, forty-five minutes? Just crazy. So whatever we can do, hearts and prayers out to those people, and it's just horrific. But it was a very busy weekend. We had thirty people at our house, and it was diapers, and it was pool toys and everything else, but it was a great weekend. But I really thank everyone. I thank everyone for their, for their engagement here. Next scheduled city council meetings for Monday, let's see, next regular meeting of the city council will be on Monday, August fourth. We have a study session and a closed session. It'll start five thirty PM, and the regular meeting will start at six thirty PM. We adjourned at ten oh two PM. Thank you all.
Hi, Steve-O.
Bye, Stevie.
Don't forget my fish.